Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the September 7th meeting of the Barron's Planning Board. Excuse me. Tonight in attendance, we have, starting at the end, Andrew Melnickis will be a voting member. As we're short, are we short of a regular member? No, I'm sorry. He can't fill in the band. Andrew will be an alternate. To my left, Ron Allard. My name is James Jensen. Jeff Brand. We have Buddy Hackett. And remotely, we have Steve Diamond. If you can acknowledge, you can hear me, Steve.
Greetings, yes.
And Candace Krantz.
Hi, I can hear you.
Thank you. As well as Code Enforcement Officer John Huckins sitting in for the Land Use Office, and Barbara Irvine, Town Administrative Assistant, and Conne McGyver, Town Administrator. First on the agenda tonight is approval of the meeting minutes from August 3rd. Do you have any comments, directions?
I have none.
I have one. On the second page, near the bottom, it says Robert's Plan.
Was it again? Right here. Third page, I guess.
Third page, okay.
At the bottom.
Yeah.
The ammunition stored like others stored, I didn't know.
Yeah, what he had said at that particular point was that, you know, they sell ammunition as well as guns, and that the ammunition was stored as they normally do. The bulk quantities, if you remember, this discussion was, are going to be stored out in those storage areas. You know, the bulk of the ammunition.
The contact box.
In the contact boxes in the rear. So he was simply saying that the ammunition is, you know, stored like others when it comes to the retail sales.
Oh, like other entities do?
Yeah, like other retail entities.
Retail entities, okay, okay. Makes sense.
Do we need to add that, or?
It confused me.
Well, we could substitute retail entities for others.
Okay.
All right. Just read, add retail entities after other.
Anything else? Nope.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the minutes with the edit on page three.
Motion by Jeff Brand, Ron Allard, Buddy Hackett. Did I fail to introduce you? I'm sorry. Buddy Hackett, wrong. I think I missed, I think I skipped you now.
I put in some fresh contacts, and it's not doing me justice.
I don't think it makes much of a difference.
Buddy Hackett. Approval of the minutes.
Hi.
James Jensen, aye. Jeff Brand.
Aye.
Ron Allard.
Aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Mr. Approved as amended. Next up on the agenda, we have. 238-36-V-21-SR Waldron E. Haley World Trust. Request by applicant for a one-year extension to allow obtaining of state permits on application, which is 36-V-20. Someone here for that, or the letter?
Good evening, and vice versa. We have been doing some work on the project. We are done so.
Just because the microphone picked you up right there, just in the recording, thanks.
Again, Scott from Beals. We've been working on the project to obtain all permits, which we have done so through New Hampshire DPS. Still waiting on confirmation from New Hampshire DOT on their permit. I have talked with James Hewitt from the district, and we assume that we should be getting that in a couple of weeks, but due to that, we would like to request an extension.
And we don't, we don't hold things up while waiting on state permits, but I understand from your letter that DOT is also impacting your AOT permit?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
What's going on with the depth of drainage and the traffic analysis? You seem to have some level of disagreement with what the advice we got from the engineering firm said.
We have addressed all concerns in relative to the state permits. We actually have our AOT permit in hand, so all the drainage has been solidified. We're just simply waiting on New Hampshire DOT.
Anything else?
Do you think that the current life situation with COVID and whatnot, that a year is going to be enough for your extension?
Absolutely.
If there's no other questions, I make a motion to grant a one-year extension.
I make a motion to grant a one-year extension for application 238-36-V-21 and 20SR.
Motion by Jeff Brand, Ron Allard, James Jensen, aye. Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Ron Allard. Motion carries. One-year extension is granted.
Great, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, 251-64GR slash EAO-7V dash IRE-63. Stephen and Jim Rolinsey request applicant for a one-year extension to allow applicant to construct previous facility, with the deadline set forth in cycle and approval on the case below. Number, did they waiver?
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Dan Classic. I'm an attorney. I represent EIP investigations in regards to its quest for a further one-year extension for the approved telecommunications tower on Bumper Road. As I included in my correspondence, EIP had earlier. For the 27, 2023, for the continuation of those permits. Just to provide this board with a little background, the original deal was in 2017, which included a two-year term. Then I noted this extension on October 9, 2019, and September 9, 2020, this board granted the extension until October 17. Here before the board this evening is to request a further additional extension of time to October 17, 2022. In the correspondence, I outlined to this board that isn't any changes to the proposed approved project. What it consists of still is a 150-foot monopole tower that will accommodate up to four wireless service providers. Ground space that's approximately 3,800 square feet. It's surrounded by. Access still being controlled as defined by an existing driveway extension. Electric and telephone connect as it's been on the plans in accordance with utility specifications. So while we have continued to work diligently, really to pursue the completion of this project, we had discussed, I think, at a prior meeting a year ago, and the year goes by very quickly, really are circumstances beyond their control that have prevented them from moving forward. Namely, EIP is an infrastructure company. They work in partnership with the wireless service providers to develop the necessary infrastructure. At the time of the proposal, there was some additional mergers and other acquisitions that occurred in the industry, some consolidations, unfortunately prevented them from moving forward at that time, and they're continuing to encounter those difficulties as they try and secure the necessary commitment from a wireless service provider to move forward. So, but EIP has indicated that we believe that with this additional one-year extension, that they'll be able to secure the necessary commitment from a wireless service provider that will allow them to move forward. As I detailed in my correspondence, there would be a substantial hardship that would result if this were denied, and that really is key when working with these, the industry is to have a permit-ready facility. So apparently, they do have that permit-ready facility, and this extension will allow that to continue. It really affects the marketing and the ability to secure the necessary commitment from the wireless service provider. As I said, there's been no change to the existing facility or the facility that has been approved by this board, so therefore, there will be no prejudice resulting from the grant of a further extension. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Well, I'll just bring up a couple of points. So, the 24 months is put it in RSA 2674-39, five-year exemption. This is active and substantial development or building has begun on the site by the owner or the owner's successor in interest in accordance with the approved subdivision plat within 24 months after the date of approval. Or in accordance with the terms of the approval. So that's where we get rooted with the 24 months. Now, that same RSA in its last sentence of 274-39 says, "The planning board may, for good cause, extend the 24-month period set forth in paragraph 1A." So, the state statute allows us to do that. With that noted, seeing as we have the ability to go ahead and do that under the statute, and we can waive our own regulations, I have, and I understand that your company, you've been hit by a double whammy, consolidation of the telecom industry in the middle of the pandemic, and so that's adversely impacted your ability to move forward. So, that certainly seems, it says, for good reason to meet what the state statute said. I'll just note, though, that, at least in my mind, that given that this is under the five-year exemption, the five-year exemption, of course, was so that projects that had been approved or substantially far forward in the planning and application process wouldn't be adversely impacted by legislation or state regulation changes. And so, it gives this five-year exemption, I would think, even though we have the ability to extend the 24-month period, because this is linked in the legislation to the five-year exemption, that this would be the last extension that we'd be able to give, because this was approved back in 2017, next year, 2022. So, I mean, the whole five-year exemption was, we'll give you a period of time, we don't want to adversely impact developers and businesses having to implement new regulations and substantial cost of changes, but the clock runs out at five years. So I would think that our ability to, I would suggest that our ability to extend this beyond that, that clock also runs out on extensions. So, I mean, we understand that you're not responsible for what's happened to you, but I, I would just note that it seems like we could go ahead and grant this extension per the RSA, but it needs to be clear that this is probably the last time we would be able to do that. It would be questionable if we could even do that in light of the legislation it's tied to.
I would tend to agree with you, and the only caveat being that if nothing in the law and approvals have changed, then a consideration be made next year, just if that comes to that, just because if the, if it's still an approvable project, it's, it kind of seems...
But, and the five-year exemption law says, you're exempt for that five years, but if you get beyond that point, the idea is, then you are going to, once that five-year clock runs out, now, if your project goes forward from that point, you are going to have to comply with whatever state regulations and laws have been enacted in that five-year period. And the only way to do that is through the application and approval process. That's the only thing that's... A reviewable process by a quasi judiciary body, which we are, and that is the process defined by state law. So, I don't see a way around the five-year exemption law.
The five-year exemption law is actually if you change zoning on your site review regulations. So what those have to change, there's no five-year exemption. It's, he's exempt from those changes.
But the only way, but the only, like I said, the only process for evaluating that is through the application and approval process.
I don't agree.
Okay, well, we can debate that later, but anyway, I raised that as a question.
And that's what I was saying about John, if it's, if nothing's changed that we are aware of, and that would still be approved based on nothing changing, then it would, that would be the circumstance.
Even if this application is asking for an extension, if your zoning's changed since you got his last approval.
Right.
I would say, probably shouldn't allow it to continue because there was a zoning change, we should comply with it. But at this time here, if there's no zoning change and no site review changes...
Yeah, but it's not...
...it's going to be exactly the same as before.
Yeah, but it's not just the zoning or our regulation changes, but if state law changes or state regulations change, then you're going to have to comply with those too.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. Under, under the site, expiration of plan, this has an extension not to exceed one year. Maybe granted by a determined vote, board may only grant one such extension. That applies to subdivisions, but it seems to me it's questionable whether that apply to all extensions.
We've had this debate before, and the others are administrative rule, we can change that and overrule it because of the fact that if nothing's changed, that needs to be re-reviewed or come into compliance with. There's no point in sending an applicant through the same process just to be approved if nothing's changed.
I think we can change your rule.
Well, but we can waive any rule for that. So, the cleanest way to do that is to waive the rule and then grant the extension.
Because, like you said, and I agree with following the rules, but if you change that to an unlimited amount of time, it would lead to forever, and they wouldn't have to come back for a waiver if zoning changed in that amount of time.
When this matter was brought before us a year or more ago, there was talk of a merger occurring, and that was the only reason cited for why you were experiencing a hardship. Has there been additional mergers or additional hardships you're experiencing, or are you, or are you citing the same incident more than a year ago?
First, I would just initially like to respond. I mean, we did request a waiver in our correspondence and outlined submission, understanding that you do have those regulations, but we did specifically request a waiver justification for that waiver in conjunction with the request for the one-year extension. But in regards to...
This is 3.3, right? That doesn't relate to the extension point?
Yes, we were specifically looking at your regulations. I'd requested a waiver, it's like plan regulations, the law. There's a specific provision in here that I read that, you know, as you said, limits it to two-year with a one-year extension. Site plan, few regulations, waiver of your regulations based upon statutory language that has been cited as far as hardship. So, that's what I was referencing in my correspondence before asking for the waiver, before asking for the continuance of, asking for a waiver of that. Similarly, approach that we took, you know, last year, following. In regards to the continuing difficulty, there are, the circumstances haven't changed that much from my client's perspective. EIP Communications is an infrastructure company. They have to, in partnership with the service providers, so in many ways, they are at the mercy of their requirements. So, because of the merger in the industry that occurred several years ago now, it was, I guess, a shifting of priorities, carrier that they had originally contacted and contracted as a result of that merger. It was a delay that resulted, and that delay is unfortunately continuing. Basically, they have not been able to get the necessary commitment that they need from the wireless service provider. So, it is a continuation difficult they've been encountering, understanding that they're continuing to work diligently to do so, but they have the limited ability as far as waiting for a wireless service provider that they're working with to commit to the project. So, that's why we're asking for additional request. As it said, having a permit-ready facility is really critical for them as far as the continuing discussions. I think the failure to have that certainty, that would only make it more difficult for them to secure the requisite commitment from their customers. And I think, as has already been discussed in my opening, we're not changing anything. The plan's exactly the same. We included that with our installation, with our submission to this board. It's approved in 2017. All we're asking for is an additional year to continue that, continue that marketing effort, secure the necessary commitment, so that we can get this site on air, so that you can provide some proved wireless service. I don't think there's really any particular advantage, as I think has been discussed, in having them go through an additional process, when it's the exact same project that's already been approved. And I certainly appreciate the fact that you have these regulations in place, and we're respectful of those, but we're asking that you respectfully consider our situation, the fact that we are trying to make a contribution to the community by fully improving this infrastructure in this town, so.
While you have not changed anything, things change as the years go by. For instance, people might move in or out, and I know, for instance, the board's composition has changed in these ensuing years. Even those of us, as I am, and some of the members of the board are, who were on the board, might not remember all the details and all the factors that might have changed or be worthy of consideration now. It seems like since things have not changed much, that this is being kicked down the road indefinitely, and I personally have a problem with that. Eventually, you need to restart the process if you're not going to move forward in a reasonable timeframe.
I just, I take issue with the word of "much." If you have a specific thing that's changed, other than people's perspective, we're talking about zoning and site review, something that's changed, we can address that, but obviously, opinions change, and those we will consider as well, but for an extension such as this, I think it, it's important for us to focus on zoning and site review that may have changed, that could be addressed, and to my knowledge, there's nothing that would be affected by starting this process from the beginning to get to this point again, really, you know, other than the one waiver they requested, there's really nothing that they asked for that would not be approved again today.
Well, Steve, that, why I went back to the five-year exemption rule, is that, you know, within that five-year period, which we're still within the five years from their initial approval, then they're exempt from all, all the changes within the zoning ordinance or the subdivision regulations, impact fee changes, zoning order changes, they're exempt from all of that. So, at this point in time, under RSA 674-39, they're exempt from any of those things. So, that's why, at this point in time, I wouldn't have a problem personally granting the exemption or voting for an exemption, or voting for a, an extension. To your point about this going on endlessly, I think at the point the five-year clock runs out, that's when we have the discussion of, yeah, should there be any more extensions? Because we've now exceeded the five-year exemption period. And even to John's point about, well, nothing's changed, but the only way you adjudicate that, and it's not just the town regulations, it's the county regulations, things, you know, that might have changed at that level, that's when we need to have the discussion, and I think that there would be legitimate pushback for their extensions at that point.
I would be more prepared to say yes to an extension now if I knew we had all agreed that this is the last one.
Well, I don't know that we can say that with certainty.
We can't hold that future board.
Right.
Standard that we voted in. So, even if you said that, the board that would vote on this next year has a right to make their own decision. You can't hold them to a decision they're making.
Well, and to your earlier point, there's no guarantee that the people that are sitting here today, even if they agreed with that, would be sitting here next year. So, I don't see how that kind of guarantee, we can make that coming.
Sure, it's not binding. I just, I would find it meaningful, is my point.
And I feel it's appropriate to let the client know, the applicant know that that's where the board kind of stands now, in one year's time, if nothing's changed, there might be a review process at that time we're looking for.
Yeah, I said that, yeah, in a different set of circumstances, just within the last week. I can't predict what the board will do into the future, but as the chair has just said, you should be aware that there's at least going to be discussion, and there's some probability that another extension would not be granted. So, just so you understand that.
Thank you. To Ron's point, on the third page in the file, he does ask for that waiver.
Right. Expiration of...
And you probably should be voted on.
Yes. Well, then, that's what I was saying earlier. Cleanest way to do it is waive the requirement, then...
Due to the nature of it, I will take the opportunity to open public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to have some input, make a statement.
Any no hands? If there's anybody participating.
All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. So, a motion to grant a waiver?
No. I make a motion to waive Site Plan Regulation 2.5.12, applicable to Application 251-64-GR/SDAO-17SR.
Motion by Jeff Brand.
Can we repeat that motion?
Sure. I make a motion to waive Site Plan Regulation...
Is it 2.12?
Yeah, 2.5.12 for Application 251-64-GR/SDAO-17SR.
We have a second. Second by Ron Allard. James Jensen, aye. Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Ron Allard. Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
4-2, waivers granted.
Do we need a motion on...
Yep, we need the motion on the extension.
I make a motion...
I make a motion to grant a one-year extension for application case number 251-64-GR/SDAO-17SR.
Motion by Jeff Brand. Second by Ron Allard. Genison, aye. Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, nay.
Ron Allard.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Five in favor, one against. Extension is granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He was welcome. 236-4-SR-SR, Sunset Rock, request by application site review to increase our operation in Barrington from 83 acres to 88 acres. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Howard Pollak. I'm going to talk to Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartenwell. Here tonight for Sunset Rock LLC. This is an application to expand an existing excavation area, and the application has been pending since late 2000. And so what we're hoping to discuss tonight is entering into a process to complete review and to resolve application issues and questions, so that we can move folk to a determination. City of Dover has, in a butter to the project area, has been active in data requests and doing some investigation of the application themselves. But we're hoping that the town of Barrington and the planning board will also see the value of obtaining peer review for the board, so that you too can have an expert advising as to the contents of the application and try to move forward with some of the engineering issues it presents. And so, as indicated in the agenda, we are looking for continuance of the application this evening, but for the purpose of having the applicant agree to review and fund the scope of work that the town would be comfortable in to obtain some peer review and some engineering review, so that you could move forward with your review process of the application generally. Our suggestion, although we don't know whether you have a particular vendor for these things and how long it would take to make arrangements, would be to continue the review for 60 days, so that the board might ask staff to work with the applicant to reduce the scope of work and a budget, have the applicant approve that budget, and have some work product from that consultant come back to the board. We would, of course, over in the same period of time, continue with the City of Dover consultant to answer their questions, and hopefully have them resolve their comments in the same timeframe.
Excuse me, unless I heard it wrong, you said this is, this application's been pending since 2000?
Yes. So there, I'm the new guy, so forgive me if I've gotten this at all mistaken, but I did find, I'm sorry, did I say 2000?
Yes, you did. Wait a minute.
The pit's been there since then.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
My apologies. What I meant to say and should have said was November 2020.
Yes.
My apologies. That probably makes a lot more sense.
It does. If it'd been hanging around for 20 years, yeah, I think we would have known.
You would have noticed, for sure. My apologies.
Yes. And seeing as I heard, I was sitting on the board when I submitted the application, I know I have been around that.
2020, apologies.
Okay. Right. I said.
You want to get some insight into this a little bit, as far as?
Yeah, I think.
Looking at my email.
Well, so if, as I understand it, in order to move this process forward, I guess I got a couple of questions. One, you, and I just heard it from you, I believe you indicated that the applicant is now willing, and to answer your question, yes, the town, in fact, we recently hired a new engineering firm, and we had DuBois and King, we now have CMA. So they are the people that we would go to with the request, and they either, with their in-house resources or through a sub or a consultant, they would provide the input. Those are the people that we use, our CMA.
Let me just ask quickly, do we have any relationship with CMA that we create a cost with? We do not, thank you.
And in fact, CMA, that's one of the things that is a condition of them having a contract with the town, that they won't engage in doing work for people that may come before the board. So that's being backstopped through a contract. You mentioned the City of Dover. Obviously, the board does not want to, would not want to approve a project which adversely impacts a municipal water supply. That would be irresponsible on our part. So we have given some deference to Dover with respect to giving them time to be able to do what, gather the information and make an assessment, so as a butter who could be adversely impacted can get back to us. There has been, you know, some allegations recently that the Barrington Planning Board is just deferring to Dover to make a decision for them. I just want to make it clear, that is not true. This, the excavation site is within the town limits of Dover. This is the, I mean, Barrington.
Yeah, I'm not the only one, Mick.
The Barrington Planning Board makes those decisions. We're just trying to do so in a responsible way, and given the significance of the potential impact, you know, we just want to give people the opportunity to get the information they need, to be able to come into a public hearing and give us their perspective. At the same time, and at the same time, in sending it out for a third-party review, if there is information from other places in addition to what you supply us, we'd ask our engineering firm to evaluate that and advise us accordingly. So I just want to be clear where we are on the process here. You know, we aren't deferring to anybody. We've just been giving people ample time. There seems to have been some cooperation between Dover and Brock, but we understand that time has dragged on and people's patience are getting thin and would like to move forward.
Is it the case that Dover has not provided any data for the analysis?
I don't believe there's any irritation with the City of Dover's role as a butter. We're trying to supply information that we have as the owner and operator and applicant for the expansion, and they've got a consultant engaged to review that information. I don't know where they stand necessarily in terms of issuing comments or opinions on the application, but I know, and what has been said rings true, that this board will need to do its own independent investigation, in fact, finding anyhow. And so my suggestion is merely to put it all on a parallel track, so that we're not waiting for things in succession, they can happen together.
Yeah. I mean, we would like, we want, you know, Dover's input. If they've got people, technically competent people that are providing views, analyzing information, the board welcomes, and in fact, we desire that. But at the same time, regardless of what Dover does, we would be sending this out, I believe, for a third-party review, a project of this magnitude, and given the circumstances, the board certainly individually doesn't have the expertise to do the technical evaluations and analysis necessary to make judgments on what the impact might be.
Am I correct in my understanding that there's nothing to review?
As far as I know, have we received anything from Dover?
No.
You've received information from the applicant.
Right. We've received information from the applicant, but, I mean, the process is, they are in a butter, just like any other butter. So as this moves forward, then we're going to have, open things up for public hearings. And at that particular time, at the public hearings, as they did before, I would expect Dover to come in and present material, what their opinion is, and weigh in as a butter to this project. And we would take the information, any information they wish to provide us, and listen to what they had to say, and that would then be used in adjudicating the application. So that's where things stand. We expect Dover's input, but we don't necessarily need to wait. As long as you know the cost is borne by the applicant whenever we send things out for a third-party review.
We do. We appreciate the opportunity to review a scope of work and budget before the work is commenced.
That's typically how it's done. You would submit your information, and you have the CMA come back with an estimate, and then you would approve it after you start the work.
That's certainly acceptable to the app.
And in this particular case, I mean, they have done work with some water systems, and they do some hydraulic modeling, but whether they have the expertise in-house, we're not sure. If they don't, under the terms of our contract with them, then, you know, that would allow them to go out and hire somebody in order to assist them in doing that particular modeling and assessment.
Yes, we also accept that. We understand that they may have to subcontract to field a complete team. We understand, we'd appreciate the opportunity to review a scope of work and budget, and then we would approve that.
Yeah, no one engineering firm does everything, so, you know, they may, they may have.
Same can be said about lawyers.
My best friend was a lawyer, I understand that.
Still friends, I'm pretty.
Unfortunately, he passed, so.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
To that point, I think, you know, we fix move forward on a timely basis. I remember getting out there in pouring rainstorm.
Yes, we did.
It's like some time ago.
It was, last fall.
Everyone is not on a timely basis, and everyone else in Dover. You know, they have, they can't reasonably hold this process up, so if that is the case, no.
And that hasn't been our, that's not our allegation, just looking to.
Yeah, I don't know that they have, but we've, we've certainly, and I think Brock, to their credit, has certainly given them time, opportunity, because of the significance of the issue here with respect to the municipal well. But we acknowledge that it's time to move on, and if you're willing to pay for the third-party review, then, you know, maybe that, that sounds like a good course of action from this point.
We are, thank you.
John?
Let me go ahead.
In terms of scope of work, I know in general, we talk about 50-year events, and that may be, you know, we should consider the scale of the consequences, what the consequences would be if there is an extremely long, extremely severe drought, or if there's extremely heavy rain events. These are, you know, usually we're talking with 50-year, 50-year events, but, you know, it's quite possible there'll be much bigger variations in precipitation, and the consequences for a large number of people would be rather large. So I hope we will be talking about the extremes, the potential extremes of precipitation when we are evaluating what is safe in terms of this project. I would also, in the past, I brought this up, we're talking about a fairly modest increase in size of this site. I would like to know at some point, when, at what size would this be too big? What size is too big for this project to accommodate the realities of the hydrologic system and other conditions of the area?
That's one of the reasons why we want to send it out to an engineering firm to determine that. So at this point in time, if it comes out that it's too big, they're probably right at this point, it's not going to be, but you want to make sure that anytime, even now or in the future, that those issues are addressed in this one.
With respect to, Steve, and you brought this up before, and certainly recent events have highlighted that, but it's at least been my experience when I've been on the board, when we've sent things out for review. With respect to drainage, drainage and erosion plans, the state's the one that dictates on their form that you look at the 50-year event, but all of the analysis that I've seen coming from the engineering forums, firms, have always included not just the 50-year event, but the 100-year event, so that that data is there to look at. And I guess that would be my expectation this time, is that we would also see it, because I think it was a Congresswoman from New Jersey today that was talking about, they'd had four 100-year events in the last two years. So certainly, things are changing, and I certainly agree with you that, you know, we need to look a little more rigorously at the, at those infrequent events. But like I said, all the erosion plans that I've seen recently, even though the state only requires the 50, the last one we looked at had the 100-year also shown on, I think it was actually one of Berry Engineering.
Just the 100-year event, that's.
Yeah, and I think it was Berry Engineering that provided us with the last one, and I think it had the 100-year calculations.
My question is, with review, on a typical process, they're reviewing things they're familiar with, are they reviewing information that they don't know what they don't have for a project like this?
We would send them the information that's possible, and with their expertise, they would look at it, and they're having to question, is it reasonable to say, we would also like this further information or that further information in order to come back with a true assessment to how it complies with our regulations? So I do think, I have to look, I didn't find it just now, but I think there's something in our regulations about 100-year event. But if that's the case, we could have them look at it to that 100-year event, because that.
And I guess I'm thinking beyond drainage and flooding, but the effects that it has on the neighbors' parcels with.
With water recharge, everything, yeah.
Yeah, water recharge, and I guess I'd like to go, you know, beyond the flooding or drought events, but also take a look at, well, if, after their analysis, say, there's a potential adverse impact on municipal well in Dover, then I would also be interested if they were taking a look at it. There's been, I mean, there's two variables there that seem significant with respect to that impact on the well would be, the distance from the well to the edge of the expansion, and the other is, and Dover's brought this up, has to do with the depth. So if you were raise the elevation of the floor by another 15 feet, or 20 feet, or 25 feet, then would the data be acceptable? So if they could also provide us with that information, that would be helpful.
And I guess that's my point. If we don't know what questions to ask, or if we rely so, it's my understanding that we rely solely on Brock's information that they're giving us based on a drainage analysis and typical site review, it's not really the same under the circumstances.
In the circumstances, I believe you're right. It's totally different, because Dover has brought up concerns, I think those concerns CMA should know about, so they can give you their opinion on if the concerns are legitimate, and as was stated, if they are legitimate, what can you do to minimize that? So it's not going to have that negative effect, whether it, like Jeff said, is raised 10 feet. You don't know.
Right, and so, yeah, and that's the stuff that I guess I'm more concerned with, and can we give, can we request a deadline from Dover to have that information to us, so we can send it to CMA to get an appropriate?
Dover's in a butter, just like everybody else. They know when the public hearings are. They are responsible to come in and provide information to us. We, this is not a pull, this is not like the applicant. The applicant, we can require materials to be supplied to the board. In a butter, we cannot.
I think we could probably let them know that they want the concerns addressed by our third-party review.
Well, and then there's, well, and City of Dover, and I'm not saying they aren't, they should be monitoring what we're doing here at the board. We put out public notices, they knew that there was going to be a meeting tonight. I don't know that Dover isn't here. I know they are, and we're going to find out when we open it up for public hearing. So like all the butters, I agree, you know, this is kind of in odd circumstances where we're talking about something significant, a municipal water supply, but at the same time, from a process standpoint, Dover's in a butter like everybody else.
Sure.
And they don't necessarily get any special treatment, although I think the board is profoundly interested in hearing what Dover has to say, and we would like their information, but it's their choice to provide that or not provide it.
But where they have got their own consulting, their own expense.
Right.
It seems like to have our engineers review their concerns at the same time.
But to Jeff's point, if they're not expressing their concerns, we can have them, and that's fair.
I just think that.
But we can't force that.
Would not be a bad thing.
Well, and the heads up is that we're going to put out the minutes of this meeting. So Dover, if you're listening, please know that we're moving forward and please supply us with whatever information or comments that you have at the public hearing or the next public hearing.
Or submit them to the planning.
To the planning office. Uh, but they should be monitoring this. I, I mean, I have to believe that if the town of Beringham had a municipal well, that's going to be impacted on what was having in Dover, then the planning office, the land use office and planning board would be keeping tabs on that, making sure that our input was provided to them. But I, you know, we're walking a fine line here. Like I said, we're all profoundly interested in what Dover has to say, but they are in a butter and they have to be treated as such. Just from a process.
I agree.
I, I agree with everything that you said. It's just.
I think it would be appropriate to, as a courtesy, have John, use, use John's staff time to let them know that there's an opportunity to, uh, chime in on this, uh, with a certain window.
I, I, yeah, I think we're setting a precedent.
If we do that, we'd have to do it with every butter on every case. So there's a point where you're crossing the line.
Yeah.
They were, they were notified of a date in time specific of this hearing. And as Jeff said, they did have given notice. They are there. Um, if Ross would like to contact Dover and say, we're sending stuff out, that's there. They have that option as an applicant. Just to give them a heads up because they know sooner or later that we're going to have a discussion with Dover and they probably like to have that information brought forward sooner rather than later, or doesn't hold the process up.
Now, and, and yes, exactly. And so I'd say the motivation for the applicant to talk to Dover would be, so if Dover's working on something, we're getting a third party review, we come in, Dover comes in at the last minute with technical analysis that is contrary to what our engineer said, then we're going to have to go back to the engineer and say, okay, you know, we got, we got a difference of opinion here. We, we need you to adjudicate this and advise the board. You know, take a look at what they're saying. Where are they wrong? Where are you wrong? Where are you right?
As, as the board well knows, we don't have any ability or desire to squelch the participation of an a butter.
Yeah.
And if it would help the conversation and the board's comfort level, we'll, we'll just tell them. Uh, I mean, there's, there, there's no intent to surprise anybody. Just want to get on a track to get to an end point.
We understand that. And you've been listening to discussion here about the process. We have to be careful that.
For sure.
We, we aren't showing bias or favoritism to a particular butter as a board, you know, we, we have to be careful about that. So.
And, and I appreciate that concern.
As a representative for the applicant, if the applicant knows that there's other information out there potentially, then that's not the board's doing. That's.
The last thing we want is to get to a public hearing and have the board feel surprised that somebody hasn't participated fully and send it right back through the same turnstile again.
And, and I would, and, and I just have to believe, and, you know, we don't have direct conversations, is that Dover understands it's in their best interest to participate both with the applicant and also with us to get their information. I mean, potentially if they sit on the sidelines and then we approve the application, it's kind of too late at that point.
I don't think there's that intention at all.
I, I, I don't think so either. So we, we welcome the opportunity to send this out for third party review, or I do. Um, and, uh, but at the same time, we welcome input from the public, all the butters, including the city vote.
Has it been a lot of us tonight to open the public comment?
Yes, we do.
The board has no other question to comment?
I have one quick question about Steve, your question about when enough is enough size wise. Is that in reference to the 83.3 to 88.8? Is, is that where enough is enough? Or do you think that there's a, a even beyond that, it's going to be, the scope might even get bigger. I'm just curious about the, the question you asked, um, just for clarification.
I'm, I'm interested and concerned both in the acreage and in the depth, as Jamie brought up.
Okay.
And I suspect that it's going to be a, a five acres at a time and it, it might continue. I mean, it's, it's was smaller once and it got bigger and it's going to, might continue to get bigger as time goes on.
If, if we decide that at this, this point in time, adding that additional five acres doesn't make it too big. I think that's something that you evaluate on a case base. Each change that's made in the size of the pit changes its characteristics, which requires a new analysis that, uh, I think it's, it's probably impossible, even from an analytical standpoint at this point in time, to be able to predict how big is too big. It depends on what changes, what direction, uh, what changes there are in, in the climate that, that we're living in today. So I don't know that we can predict, you know, I, and I think we just have to evaluate that each and every time, if they come back in to expand the pit further.
With any other.
Yeah, right.
And incremental growth is probably the best approach, really.
Well, Jamie's point about depth, um, if, if that is evaluated, uh, what, what depth is too much, that, that addresses much of my concern.
Yeah. And that, that was one of the things in looking at it, one of the issues that did come up as they're going down, they're actually, if I recall correctly, I, I, I might have read this incorrectly, but I, I thought they were actually going down into the water table with the depth. And, and Dog agrees. Um, so I think that, you know, they can look at that as if there is a height that would minimize that impact. So.
That is.
It is.
It is.
Um, all right. At this point, I'm going to open public comment. But anyone here is to speak on that, has a question, comment, statement? Um, if you're on the internet joining us, uh, raise your hand, a star six, unmute your phone. All right. We'll close public comment. Uh, next steps, we are looking to continue to.
Do you think you could get the information to us to center?
I think you have the basic application materials and what we would be doing, providing some of the additional information that I know.
Reasonable to go two months to try to get this review stuff done before you come back or you want to come back in another month. A, a two month thing would be more realistic.
Right. That, I think, I was thinking 60 days.
Well, I, I think that, uh, CMA is probably going to want to look at the application, look at what questions we're asking and then they may have to go back to them as part of that estimation process, say, and oh, by the way, here's the additional information we're going to need, which they may not know until they
Correct.
Get together with their consultant and say, here's the price and here's the additional information you need from Brock.
So you're agreeing with 60 days?
I, I think 60 days is.
Probably be that or more, but 60 days you could have an update to see what we're at.
I wouldn't hesitate to come back if we needed more.
I mean, it's going to.
Explain our status.
It's, I, I, just to guess, it, it's probably going to take two to three weeks to get the contractual agreement signed and everybody understands.
I think a month and a half.
Yeah.
Too much puts us, I think, uh, election day, November 2nd. So, um, a project with, that could have possible public input might want another night. If.
Yeah.
It's true. I just, I don't, I don't want to hear the outrage that we scheduled it on a night when people voted and they. Uh, isn't November 2nd election?
We're not. There's no election this year, right?
Voting?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Repeat what I say?
Okay. Okay. So you understand, and there will be communications between the applicant, Brock, and the land use office in order to finalize the, the work order.
Certainly.
CMA. Okay. All right. So we're talking, uh, about a continuance with the understanding that you're going to work with them.
Please.
Uh, then I make a motion to continue. Uh, application 236 dash four dash CR dash 20 dash SR until 2 November.
Motion by Jeff Fran, second by Ron Allard.
2021.
Buddy Hackett.
I Hackett, I.
Uh, Ron Allard, Jeff Fran.
Fran, I.
James Jenison, I. Uh, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Candace, Fran.
Crans, I.
All in favor, extend it to November 2nd?
Thank you. And the, the motion didn't specifically reference age group. That's the expectation.
Yes.
That during that.
Yes. Yeah. Well, that's why I asked the question. Normally it would not include, but it would be an understanding that if, if that's what you want. If you, you want to go to third party review, it sounds you do, then in order to facilitate that, you got to work with the land use office to get a work order in place.
Yeah, understood. That's what we'll do. Thank you.
Um, next up, number five, of development group, Mr. Barry.
Welcome. You again. 30 days. Do you live in Marytown? Oh, I know. You should. He doesn't have to go home. You got a cotton. So all the documents are here. And so they'll be able to.
Mr. Chairman, Christopher Barry, we're surveying and engineering representatives of development. We have a couple of things to go over with you. We're not, uh, hearing our project plan. I think we've been sufficient last month. Um, since then, uh, we had discussed, uh, this month. Uh, and since then, we've received, pointed out a couple of other, uh, items that we wanted to discuss with you. We have design ramifications forward. It's not a group of items. Uh, we don't want to continue on design if, um, if we need to change our approach. So, and then secondly, we want, did just want to bring the board up to speed on, at the two reviews and show you, uh, some of the site plan modifications that we've made based on the comments that we received during designer view and then last month. So, uh, over the basic plan changes that we've made. The, I think the biggest design change that came out of the last meeting, uh, site plan design standpoint, it, uh, second of the two pages. Uh, the board is keenly interested in making the sidewalk from what's called High Point Drive that will likely change based on another similar road in town. But for this plan, it's called High Point Drive, the sidewalk entrance. Uh, add, uh, there would be a crosswalk added there, a stick of sidewalk. And then I think you can see that have, uh, two buildings that oppose each other. So there'd be no sidewalk there. Pick the sidewalk up and continue that, uh, in an orderly direction along the entire, uh, remaining length of High Point Drive. Second design feature that were discussed was, uh, adding some additional parking project. So that has been added to this. Nice flatter, flatter area to add that additional parking for some guest parking. And all we had to do was move the, uh, proposed effluent disposal area away from that, uh, parking area. So we've taken that sidewalk and brought it around, uh, that, that area. So that provides for good connectivity between the, uh, rear of housing units and the proposed project out front. And then of course, we've always proposed a sidewalk go uh, down and connect onto the sidewalk that was built as part of the phase of the Christmas stuff. Um, so I guess, uh, I prefer to take these one at a time. If the board feels that that's sufficient, sign, and we forward with that. Felt there.
This is additional to your, your letter that you sent.
That's right. That's right. If there was additional, uh, comment that was required, uh, that would, uh, some modification in design, we'd like to hear it, uh, tonight. Um, the, as I pointed out, uh, the last planning board meeting, we discussed, uh, a, a potential waiver request here where High Point Drive meets community, proposed community way. And, uh, in my letter, I point out, uh, and provides some screen captures of some revised profiles of that area. And so originally, uh, we were applying with the regulations. We met 2% of the intersection. Uh, discussed with the board stoutening that up to 2% within a car's length of, or two car lengths of the intersection as we've done in prior projects. So we filed throughout our High Point Drive and provided screen captures of that inside of our letter. And I think the board there's a pretty appreciable difference between the existing, what was the proposed profile and what is the new proposed profile. And by picking that road up, so substantially we're able to pretty much, uh, remove well over half of the ledge construction that we were proposing originally. I think the only ledge construction left is utility construction, which were used on our current test bits field, hammer instead of actual blasting, which is always the preferred method.
So that, that's number one in your list.
So that's the waiver request number one and his, uh, screen captures are demonstrated in it. The obvious hardship for that particular, uh, waiver request, the obvious hardship is ledge.
Right.
Since for one.
I, I believe we talked about minimizing ledge removal in two spots. That was one.
Yes.
And the other one was down where it, uh, intersects with the current community way.
Yeah, there's really no way for us to modify that geometry where it's the existing community way.
Yeah.
Um, just based on how it'll be coming off from that, uh, vertical tangent there. So there will need to be some removal of material through there. Uh, there becomes a, a point at which, uh, ledge can be removed with a hammer, uh, efficiently at certain quantities. And then it relates to be blasted and trying to stay within that.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I, you know, as I recall on that, uh, waiver first way, way we request, uh, that, yeah, we, we had done a similar thing with Meaty House Road.
That's right.
And, uh, that seemed to be fairly successful.
That actually goes from 2% into a 9%. This is going from 2% into a 6%. So there'll be, uh, you know, flatter approach entering.
Yeah. And that's, you know, I mean, primarily this is going to be, uh, you know, a residential road to residential use.
Right.
Board of any questions on that first waiver? 12.7, table two, intersection design, the waiver they're looking for. I can't see. That's what I'm assuming. I, I, I'm guessing they can hear me, but I just.
Steve and Candace, do you have, uh, any questions about the, the first waiver?
We're talking about nine six right now?
12.7, it's on the letter from Barry Engineering to the planning board. Uh, where he outlines the, uh, the waivers that he's requesting. First one, section 12.7, table number two. On the, uh, allowed road grade, that the requirement is 2% within 100 feet. He's proposed 2% for the first 40 feet, then transition to 6%. And that, that has to do with, uh, mitigating the amount of ledge removal potentially. Uh, it, it, it's going, they're not going to need to be doing blasting in order to do this. We assume we will not do. We assume they won't, but no guarantee, but it will significantly reduce the, uh, amount of legs that needs to be removed. And it's consistent with what we've done in the past, as I just referenced Meaty House Road. If you recall where it connects with Smoke Road, go down the hill. Still there, Steve?
Yes, I, I'm remembering that, uh, and what we did in that instance, uh, this seems less drastic.
Right. It is.
The board, address that waiver in time and.
Okay. Well, if nobody has exchanged that, uh, yeah. I don't have. Okay. I make a motion to.
Okay, I make a motion to a waiver. I I take it to site review regulations, right? Site review regulations, section twelve point seven, table two, for applicant, application two thirty-five dash one point one and three dash T C dash twenty-one dash S R.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Waiver is granted.
So.
Yes, by the way, so I forgot to add the language about the why we were approving the waiver. And that was because. Not granting the waiver opposing unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the. That was intended to be part of that.
Let's have a re vote then, just to be clear. Jeff Brand.
Uh, Brand, aye.
Ron Allard. Uh, Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Uh, the next waiver. Twelve two one.
So twelve two one addresses cul-de-sac radiuses, point out all towns requirements inside of our. Uh, inside of the towns regulations and point out where. Different, I think it's important to point out for this waiver request that. This cul-de-sac that's around Bay, which is proposed to be public in the future, is compliant with the regulations. Maybe the next time it comes back to the. We we increased that from the last time we've seen it. And the waiver request that we're requesting here on High Point Drive, which is essentially, I don't want to refer to it as a private driveway, but it is a private road, will be under private ownership. And I point out in our waiver request that the largest vehicle required to navigate that turn. Fine. And there's no deduction in either fire safety and or in the future. Roadway, driveway is not responsible for.
So. Couple of questions. The one is Chief Walker had said not just to look at the largest truck that Barrington has, but look at the largest, largest tower truck that Dover Rochester Durham has.
Did you do that? So the fire truck that's shown inside. Waiver request.
Yep.
Just a fire truck. Dover fire truck is actually smaller, and the Exeter fire engine is also smaller than.
Okay. Why, in this particular case, do you want to reduce the ratings?
So as I point out in the waiver request, I don't have the topography shown on the site plan. There's a substantial slope. West to the east. If increase that radius beyond what we will be increasing the side slope so that we have contours that come down 50 feet away from the proposed roadway. Uh, the second reasoning is, we actually don't even intend to construct this cul-de-sac, to be perfectly frank. We intend to come back with, as soon as this is approved and they're under construction, come back to the second phase, which I think we've discussed with the board in the past for additional mixed use product. Uh, and continue this road around so that it actually loops back on to community way so that this cul-de-sac actually is never really constructed. Uh, if the applicants don't continue on with that phase, then this cul-de-sac will be constructed, and it would be perfectly safe to do so.
It just seems like a rather significant reduction. You're going from.
Mildly.
What, sixty-two feet?
Constructive and used.
Yeah. Sixty, you're going from what? Our requirement is sixty-two feet. You're going down to thirty-five?
Yeah.
That's. And and looking, I I mean, I, looking at the drawings that you did with respect to the fire truck turning radius. And it looks possible, but it looks like it's going to be.
Those are also full speed, so. It'll be twenty-five or thirty?
Yeah.
What background? Cul-de-sack side. What is because getting the fire truck around because it went to maintenance to keep the snow off. That's probably maintained. Backing up and shoving over snow. They could cul-de-sack, they can just keep. Yeah, with the the concern there being that they don't maintain it properly, and it becomes tighter for a fire truck to turn under those.
Uh, we haven't run a school bus. A school bus is. I'd have to check the exact measurements, but it's a similar length, and it's also a non-articulating vehicle.
So it's turning.
Same size.
Yeah.
Same, it'd be more difficult because it's not articulating or?
Well, no, if our truck is not articulating, uh, it's a solid state. So, um, I mean, what?
So what would, what would be the impact? If we said, we'll meet you in the middle, like. Reduce it from sixty-two to forty-five vice thirty.
I'd have to deal with it.
Right? I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's how this. That is true, but I'm right here.
I mean, would a. Is a hammerhead?
A hammerhead's really, it doesn't help because we we still have that same cantilever ring over the slope effect. So. You know, if the board is more comfortable at forty-five, then we can increase it to forty-five. We can tighten up the slopes and and just, it's not a, it doesn't end the project. But it it would, it will increase the down slope slopes pretty considerably. So if the board's interested in in that type of radius, we'll certainly come back with that. I don't know if I'm the only board member that's.
I think with the idea that it's not going to be used, not going to be built, I feel more comfortable saying make it bigger than.
Cost you on that statement, as Chris said, if they don't go through it, it will be built and be used, and that's what you're approving.
Right.
Right. We can't assume it won't.
Correct. So I think in this application, you've got. That it's going to be put in and it's going to be used.
This is what's on the plan. This is what we need to consider. Agreed. Obviously, you're right. If if they decide to go make the loop. All of this goes away, but we have to go by what's. Christopher. Pretty significant. But I I still, I hear. Mr. Berry saying, and I I appreciate that, too.
Sure.
I know he puts a lot of thought in engineering and all this, so.
So we'll put a pin in that one for now.
I have to agree with you on the the distance. I don't know if the number forty-five is what it is, but I think that if we have the potential, say it's ninety-nine point nine percent chance you'll never use it, there's still a, there's still a point there that.
Right.
It might get used, and we wouldn't want to be the board that said, all right, let's do something small that might be a little sketchy, and that's being used.
Right.
And now we are challenged.
But to his point about. Somebody just suggested about deferring this. He wants to get, go forward here and finalize his plans.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean. We've we've certainly asked for one number. The board is suggesting something different. So I'm.
Helpful if we redefend it and say.
Certainly.
Give it a waiver to forty-five. Is that, is that helpful?
Yes, absolutely.
So they made a waiver request, was.
Change.
Steve and Candace, do you have? Do you have an opinion?
Way in or?
That compromise sounds reasonable. Good job, Jeff.
I'd echo that.
You don't care. No, I just had a question. Oh, cool. The largest building, not common.
It has one below gray. And then two above, yeah.
Because all those. Lots of parking lots. The reason I ask, if it was sweepable, the ladder truck has to pull up, has to be a certain distance back from the building to send the aerial.
Yep.
Yep.
Rochester, Dover, guess they would narrow them.
Well, actually, I think Chief Walker has already weighed in on the mixed use building, so.
Yeah, we've actually reduced the floor offerment based on his concern.
Uh, Candace, did you have any comment about the cul-de-sac diameter? Radii?
I think if there's an option to be a little bigger within reason, I think that's a good compromise.
All right. And what you're telling me is, if I understand correctly, that if we said forty-five, you would have done a little bit.
Sounds like I have to.
One of the pieces is if there's going to be that, you know, potential of point zero one percent, what about the potential of that actually having to be maintained by the town of Barrington?
So we discussed that at pretty good length, the last planning board meeting. One of the things we're going to come back to with is homeowners association, homeowners association documentation, bylaws, things of that nature for the board to review. So that you know, understand, and are comfortable that this is a private, private road, and just the same as we did on the Dru-Pom project up.
And if I could remember correctly, originally, there was some discussion about the extension of community way, the town taking that, but during the last meeting, you said, all of us going to stay private, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that is the intent.
Yes. Yeah, the proposed community way where it terminates is supposed to be public, everything else will be.
Right?
Are we ready for motion?
All right, I make a motion to. Wave. Section. Uh, twelve point two point one. To allow a cul-de-sac. Uh, radius of forty-five feet by sixty-two feet for application two three five dash one and three dash T C dash twenty-one dash S R.
What's that?
Uh, because, thank you. Not granting the waiter or oppose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Although I guess I could have gone with the other.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Motion carries, waiver granted.
The third waiver has to do with the cross-section of proposed community bay. In our opinion, community way is the road that needs to either meet the section for the town center. Or a waiver. High Point Drive does not, whereas that's really not a public road. So we're asking for a free long community way for a reduction of the Center Boulevard Island from ten to eight. Reduction. Grass strip from three to two. And then there are a few terms that are used inside your cross-section. That we're not posing, and they have to offset distances for the sidewalk and then further beyond. And the width request is essentially to utilize the same exact.
I was going to say that we approved the same thing.
That's right.
Down below by the Christmas top.
That's right.
We had that discussion about the width of the grass area, the width of sidewalk, the whole thing.
Yep.
So I, I guess I would support this because this is consistent with the decisions we already made from. From two oh two into the Christmas top. So all he's doing is replicating what we already started. It seems they gave us the sidewalks, the first sidewalk. At the Barrington last time. I I'm willing to play. Bless me. You're not the first one to say that.
Any questions on the board on that waiver? Motion is ordered.
Okay. I make a motion to waive. Section twelve point two point one of the site review regulations for application two three five dash one point one and three dash T C dash twenty-one dash S R slash L L. Because of the specific circumstances relative to subdivision or conditions of land is is such, the sub to indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Motion carries, waiver granted.
All right, so the last waiver request has to be turning, this is been out of North Point. Um, this is where I disagree. I know I disagree with your consulting. This is what's necessary. And so the regulations require that curb radii, where you enter onto public roadways and are not internal to the projects, they're required to be twenty-five feet. And so you can see that, you know, for instance, all these major turns are set at twenty-five foot or larger.
Could you point those out again?
Yep. So you have a major turn here, where you have an exiting lane.
Yeah.
Uh, you have.
That's ten feet. You're proposing ten vice twenty-five.
Uh, so we're proposing ten in only two locations. I'm just demonstrating, I was.
Okay.
Really demonstrating where we have twenty.
Okay.
Posing ten in this location here, which is an internal turn island.
Yeah.
And ten here, which is the same exact situation, just in reverse. Everywhere else, we've either originally had larger radiuses or are happy to make them harder.
So it's just around. It's around. Essentially the island off the park.
That's right. And so I think we can all agree that if a twenty-five foot island was placed.
Yeah.
Any kind of urban setting, you would wipe out the entire island and really wouldn't make much sense to the regulations after that. So we're simply asking that these two islands be ten, ten foot radiuses, and the rest of them remain as twenty-five.
The board have any question on that waiver?
That seems consistent with the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Whoa. Hold on, you should make a motion. Make a motion, Steve.
No, thank you. Go ahead.
I went back to Jeff.
Okay, well, I make a motion to waive section twelve point three point two, parents five. Uh, to allow two curb radii to be ten feet when twenty-five feet is required for application two thirty-five dash one point one and three dash T C dash twenty-one dash S R slash. Uh, L L, uh, because of the specific circumstances relative to subdivision conditions of land is such in this subdivision indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Candace Krantz.
Krantz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Uh, motion carries, waiver is granted.
So I think we can get things finished, buttoned up, and then back to CMA engineers here about week. So if we could continue this case for thirty days, beginning of October. Be able to back pretty fair potential to suit.
Chris, something I want to do right now. Last meeting, I mentioned headlight sweep for those buildings up there, and the answer was that the ground level was not living quarters.
That's right.
Coming up High Point Drive, you're on elevation. You're going to sweep much higher than the ground level. So I continue to be concerned about headlight sweep across those buildings.
Okay. I don't have an answer for you tonight. Okay.
Um, I will take the opportunity to just read through these planners' comments to make sure they're all, you're aware of them, which I'm sure you are. Verify the name of High Point Drive, a private road to townhouses. The minimum sixty thousand gallons of water available to fire department twenty-four seven. He has minimum sixty thousand gallons of water available to fire department twenty-two or seven year round within one thousand drivable feet of any structure being protected. Identify sister and locations for the fire department's approval. Believe those Ron there.
They are. And I, I need to produce a. They are, and I, I need to produce a letter from an FPE for the chief about the sixty thousand gallons, so that's something I still need to work on with him.
Places with no parking signs, in areas in which fireland requirements may be restricted by vehicle parking. Life safe, would like to see life safety escape balconies on one window for each unit on the high side of the building. Additional parking spaces to visitors of the townhouses.
That's already been addressed.
And I believe we addressed winter snow storage previously. Chief, please, lighting on both roads and common areas. Have we discussed civic open areas last meeting?
Well.
We need to discuss that at some point.
Yeah, we did, and you still had to go work on designation of those areas' uses because the board has to approve uses.
That's right, yep. So, when we come back to you, we'll have that as part of.
Before we move this along, vote on continuing, I'd like to open the public comments, if anyone has, is here to make comments on this. If you're joining us on the internet, raise your hand or speak up and star six, I mean your phone, if there's any audience that would like to make comments, questions. Right, closed public hearing, and a motion to continue for thirty days. I make a motion to continue application two-three-five dash one point one and three dash TC dash twenty-one dash SR slash LL to October five. Motion by Jeff Fran, second by Ron Allard, Candace Kranz.
Kranz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Jeff Fran.
Fran, aye.
Ron Allard. Motion carries. Anybody else like a five-minute recess before we move to the next one? It's eight oh five, back here at eight-ten. add wetland, and we can correct note eleven on the notice decision, so it's not a big deal. It's got one other question in this one. Set up.
Oh, bring the meeting back in the first one.
But he didn't get lost, tech was skunk.
Well, he's got a, he's got a guide dog, he should make a new thing.
What good's a guide dog if it doesn't get you where you're going to go? I mean.
We still have a quorum, we'll continue until he makes that.
See?
I was, um, long.
Yeah, he created a lot of stated.
All right, next on the agenda, we have number six, one oh five dash two and thirteen, G R H C O W P O twenty-one dash L L. Stan and Deborah Cooley, request what happens if we adjust boundary lines as we watch two and thirteen. Anything for representative?
Good evening.
Are you?
Good.
Are you all ready?
Yes, you, Mr. Chairman. Essentially, we want to make an adjustment to our two parcels, shift one of the lines that's near to our building. So, that to cover piece of field that we had built, that was originally built when the house was built, so that stays as part property the house is on currently.
Okay, so, I think you may already be aware of this, but I was looking at note eleven on your plans on sheet one and two. It says parcels A and C to be conveyed to lot thirteen from lot thirteen to two, and parcel B to be conveyed from two to thirteen. I, looking at your, your drawing here, it appears to me that with the new boundary line, parcel A will actually go from two to thirteen, and that parcel B and C will go from thirteen to two. So, I guess I need to ask my, uh, just now. Would you agree? I mean, if you look at, here's parcel A right here, which will be within the new boundaries with lot thirteen, so parcel A would go from lot two to thirteen, and this says.
It's the opposite.
It's, yeah, it says B will be conveyed, and so, I believe note eleven should read, parcels B and C are to be conveyed from map one oh five lot thirteen to map two oh seven lot two, and parcel A is to be conveyed.
Speak with him and.
Same, that, that note's been here on both sheets of the drawing. Yes, we can just add that on, on here, in fact, I would suggest, I assume the chair's going to read this, that we would add, there's a conditions precedence, number one, which are the plans, it has an A and B, we add a C to correct note eleven. Yes, it is. Note eleven on all sheets of the plan set. That's the only thing that I have. Uh, any other members of questions, comments? There are none. Motion to accept the application as. Okay. I will, I will make a motion to accept application one oh five dash two and thirteen dash C R dash A C O slash W P O dash twenty-one dash L L as.
Second, motion by Jeff Fran, second by Ron Allard, James Jensen, aye, Candace Kranz.
Kranz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Jeff Fran.
Fran, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Motion carries, the application is accepted as complete. Board, there's no more questions, I'll open public comment. If anyone has comments, questions, statements, you're joining us remotely, star six, raise your hand, unmute microphone. Public comment? No waivers to address?
I'm going to make another motion, you're reading the decision happily.
I need all the cracks I can get.
I'm getting worse.
I will read the draft notice of decision. Dear applicant, it is to inform you that the Berryton Planning Board at its September seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting, conditionally approved your applications referenced above, all of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plan being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to the commencement of any site work or recording of any plan. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board, reference eight two three of the town of Berryton subdivision arrangement. Conditions precedent, add the owner's signatures to the final plan, wetland scientist stamp and signatures to the final plan, correct note eleven on all sheets of plan set. The applicant surveyor shall certify in writing that the bounds and pins have been installed according to the plan, any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. The lot line adjustments the applicant shall submit to the land use office with a copy of the signed and notarized deed which will affect the conveyance of the subject property before the plat is certified by the planning board. Once the plat is certified, the deed must be reported simultaneously with the plat. The lot line adjustments where the property is in the same ownership deeds incorporating the adjustment must be provided. Final drawings, a five sets of large black line plus one set of eleven by seventeen. Final approved plans must be on file with the town. Each individual sheet and every set of drawings must be stamped and signed. The land surveyor, engineer, or architect responsible for the plan. If there are significant changes to be made to the plans as specified above, one full-size paper check print must be sent to the planning department for review prior to producing these final drawings. Would you add? Motion? I make a motion to approve application one oh five dash two and thirteen dash G R slash A C O slash twenty-one dash L L. Second by Jeff Fran, second by Ron Allard, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Candace Kranz.
Kranz, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Jeff Fran.
Fran, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure. Thank you. Good luck. Get a discount from your surveyor. Number seven, two twenty dash three dash R C dash twenty-one SR, there, Andrew, request by applicant Riverside and Pickering Marine Contractors for a site review proposing with contracted storage yard, construction, marine trucks, trailers, and construction supplies, no buildings or pavement on five acres at fifteen Green Hill Road in the regional commercial building district. Welcome.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, my name is Eric Mitchell, my office for your plan. This is what we consider a site plan, tax method, money, lot three, way and green. The applicant is Riverside and Pickering Marine Contractors. The lot is zone, region, commercial, the area is five acres, the lot is currently vacant. It was a former salvage. Minor cycle and application, opposed to storage of marine construction cranes, trucks, and supplies, no buildings, haven is proposed, existing gravel area will be graded in spots. The proposed, we propose to have a gated fence at the entrances, and we give sufficient site distance for access in and out of the property. People may be familiar with the site, associated to do a lot line adjustment back in two thousand sixteen, and since then, the, all of the buildings on the site have been removed, all the salvage vehicles and everything else, basically, it's a gravel yard that's out there, and Riverside and Pickering contractors plans to do is store some of their equipment out there and some of their supplies while they're doing.
Uh, any other members of questions, comments? None. Motion to accept the application as.
Okay. I will, uh, I will make a motion to accept application 105-2 and 13-GR-ACO slash WPO dash 21-LL as.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, James Jensen, I, Candace Crans.
Crans, I.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brandon.
Ron Allard. Uh, motion carries, the application is accepted as complete. Board, there's no more questions, I'll open public comment. If anyone has comments, questions, statements, you're joining us remotely. Star six, raise your hand, unmute microphone. Public comment. No waivers to address.
I'd be making all the motions, you're reading those decisions happily.
I need all the cracks I can get.
I'm getting worse.
I will read the draft notice of decision. Dear applicant, this is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board at its September 7th, 2021 meeting, conditionally approved your applications referenced above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plan being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to the commencement of any site work or recording of any plan. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board, reference 823 of the Town of Barrington subdivision. Conditions precedent. Add the owner's signatures to the final plan, wetland scientist stamp and signature to the final plan. Correct note 11. On all sheets of plan set. The applicant surveyor shall certify in writing that the bounds and pins have been installed according to the plan. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. The lot line adjustments the applicant shall submit to the land use office, a copy of the signed and notarized deed, which will affect the conveyance of the subject property before the plat is certified by the planning board. Once the plat is certified, the deed must be reported simultaneously with the plat. The lot line adjustments where the property is in the same ownership deeds incorporating the adjustment must be provided. Final drawings, a five sets of large black line plus one set of 11 by 17. Final approved plans must be on file with the town. Each individual sheet and every set of drawings must be stamped and signed. The land surveyor, engineer, or architect responsible for the plan. If there are significant changes to be made to the plans as specified above, one full size paper check print must be sent to the planning department for review prior to producing these final drawings. Would you add? Motion?
I make a motion to approve application 105-2 and 13-GR/ACO slash 21-LL.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, I.
Candace Crans.
Crans, I.
James Jensen, I, Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
Which is approved.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure. Cue.
Good luck. Get a discount from your surveyor.
Number seven. 220-3-RC-21SR, there, Andrew, request by applicant Riverside and Pickering Marine Contractors for site review proposing a contractor's storage yard, construction, marine trucks, trailers, and construction supplies with no buildings or pavement on five acres at 15 Green Hill Road in the regional commercial building district. Welcome.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, my name is Eric Mitchell, my office, uh, for your plan. This is, uh, what we consider a site plan. Tax method, money, lot three. The applicant is Riverside and Pickering Marine Contractors. Uh, the lot is owned region. Commercial, the area is five acres. The lot is currently vacant. It was a former salvage. Minor site plan application. Storage of marine construction cranes, trucks, and supplies. No buildings, haven't is proposed. Existing gravel area will be graded in spots. Uh, the proposed, we propose to have a gated fence at the entrances. And we do have sufficient site distance for our access in and out of the property. People may be familiar with the site. Associated to do a lot line adjustment, uh, back in, uh, 2016. And, uh, since then, the, all of the buildings on the site have been removed. All the salvage vehicles and everything else. Basically, it's a gravel yard that's out there. And Riverside and Pickering contractors plans to do is store some of their equipment out there and some of their supplies while they're doing, um, for their projects. The site is not going to have any buildings on it. There's no, uh, septic systems, nothing else like that's proposed. It's really just a, a storage area for their, for their trucks, vehicles, cranes, and, uh, materials. And, but that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you want.
So just, you know, skip down, I think you've answered most of these questions. The criteria for a minor site plan, uh, it's a change in use, which is what you're saying. Minimal traffic impact on the surrounding road.
Yes.
Will be minimal impact?
Will be, given what the site was before and what is now, there's minimal changes to what it would be. And because the, uh, via contractor's yard, the vehicles will be coming in, out, it's not open to the public.
And it, and you're not changing the access?
No, we are not.
Okay. And you, you talked about minimum lot grading that's taking place, right?
Yes, because it's, it's all gravel in some places where they may have taken the buildings out and moved stuff around and maybe comics. So it'll just be smooth.
So, yeah, so you characterize that as minimum lot grading?
Correct.
Uh, any drainage improvements?
No.
Okay. Uh, so you said there are no buildings, nor do you plan on making any expansion of pavement?
I'm not.
Okay. So you need criteria for.
I think my only concern really is, um, screening for 125, um, based on the proposed use. Don't recall what it looks like. I did look and there's trees and vegetation along 125 that's pretty thick. It's open along Green Hill.
Right.
125 is pretty well.
I mean, I remember when the salvage yard was there. Right, there is a long 125. And we'd want, I think we'd want to stipulate that being.
Yes, we did, if I might, um, I just looked at the site prior to the meeting tonight too, to confirm latest what is there. And along 125, it is very, um, particularly good. So drive, see the area is gravel on Green Hill Road. Uh, and I'm saying halfway to the entrance where it is, uh, there are trees. There's much smaller trees than what there is on 125 along through that area. Um, but also another section that the entrance is going in, there's no, no trees at all. Expect to still have, that's green. Some areas, I believe 25, there was a, a wooden fence split up like a stockade around there. I didn't see it down, uh, Green Hill Road, uh, but if there's additional screening proposed on Green Hill Road, we can, uh, look into doing it. I believe that 125 is sufficient screen.
Would you continue to use that stockade fence on 125, or do you propose a different type of?
I believe it's just going to stay the way it is. They're not looking to do any clearing or anything on the outside. Part of this proposal, it's not a, it may be a commercial site, but it's not something that is retail or open to the public. They're not trying to get anybody, uh, to see what's going on there to pull in to do something. So having it screened and not visible from 125 is certainly in there. Within the requirements of what they wanted to, they don't.
And that, that's my concern, with, with typical storage lay down yard, it could become unsightly, um, depending on what they're working on and, you know, barge or stack, uh, type stuff. So that would be my only concern, and then security of the site effect. If the proposal was to change that out for chain link, let's say, or some other type of fence, you know, that would be my, uh, only interest really on that.
Was it?
Don't even look into 125. 125, there was just one little small opening that, and that's pretty well blocked off. And the rest of it's all trees and vegetation grown in.
I did see a couple pieces of fencing on the 125 side, but.
See like an opening there, but it hasn't been used in years.
Yes, but there was also on, certainly on Green Hill Road, there was no fencing anymore.
As I recall, there, it was possible to see, uh, from 125 what, what was in that lot. Uh, and just want to point out that, of course, um, a lot of those trees will lose their leaves some, some of the year. So it won't be perfect screening.
All right, I, I, I guess I will note that as many times as I went by there when the salvage yard was there along 125, I don't recall seeing uh, into the property such that it, it presented itself as an eyesore. I mean, you really couldn't see.
No, and that's why I asked. Most of the cars were single stacked for access to parts and, and such. But where the new use would be cranes and stackable materials such as cribbing and parts. It may go above, uh, fence and, uh, that used to block the cars. That's why I didn't know if the fence was still intact or visual buffer, um, or if it's fallen down and been removed since.
Yeah, the fence is gone. I mean, my, my business is across the street. I, I drive by there every day twice, at least twice a day. And there is some sort of like seasonal differences, like what, uh, what Steve was saying, that when the winter comes and the leaves drop. But it's, it's nothing that appears unsightly as, as, as it was when it was land re-s recycle.
Yeah, I, and given the equipment that's there, considering that diagonally across the intersection, you now have motorsports place. I don't know that visually that that's much more offensive than.
I would take two different ones. For profit business trying to sell product.
Well, I understand.
I mean, this could, if you, if, for instance, you drive by the sand pit at the other end of 125 where they're staging to do the puddle line work. Some people might find that less attractive to look at, you know, 40 foot tall stacks of cribbing and, and such. So that, that's only is why I.
Well, we do have it within the site plan review regulations that with respect to, uh, screening and specifically preservation of existing vegetation, that we, as part of the approval of this, could stipulate they will maintain the vegetation that currently exists. And they will not decrease the depth of the vegetation between yard and 125.
That's fine.
Is there an intent to fence it in to protect the equipment and things stored in there that would, I mean, if they're not on site and there's no buildings or facilities, I, I imagine there's no one staffed there.
Stuff is going to be here, they can carry it out, good luck to them. Most of the stuff is going to be required to be loaded onto a trailer, picked with a loader or picked with a crane. For those of you that aren't familiar with our company, we're a high-end real contractor based out of Newington. Very respectful and organized yards. It is contractors' equipment, so it does have a certain look to it, but absolutely not. Ignore how we operate. Want to be respectful, we're, our current pro, our current building in Newington, we're the only commercial zone properly, property next to residential district. So we live under these rules already in Newington, so we're very familiar with it. Have no issue keeping that buffer along 125, or the existing buffer along.
I think the other buffer, the other button, my favorite ice cream place. So you want to make sure that you're fucking there, as well as controlling petroleum products or hydrochloric acid things. We don't want those sitting around.
Yeah, there will not be anything stored there of that nature. There, if there's anything like that, it's going to be inside a container, inside a conics boxer, but that's not our intention, storing product.
Probably.
I think probably less of a, a danger than we had previously with the auto salvage yard.
We're starting over.
I think there's another property between this and Trigger Ice too.
Yeah, I think there is.
There's also that wetland to where they can't get over to do anything there because of the buffer setup, everything's going to be towards the.
And we, and by the way, when we say maintain that vegetative buffer that already exists, that means if something does happen, if there's a fire there and half the trees burned down, then the expectation is you would replant trees to take.
So that is bad?
Yeah. Before the. It is, that, right, no, I was just giving an example. Hardly same clear. Okay.
Any questions, comments?
Is the intent that, uh, the, this equipment is going to be coming and going throughout the year, including the winter?
Yeah.
And I presume these vehicles are.
The access is going to be minimal compared to the type of access that would be. Once we initially move our equipment in, if we're there two to three times a week, that will probably be a lot.
I'm bringing it up around, uh, snow removal, and it sounds like there's not going to be paving. I know these vehicles might be quite heavy. I'm just concerned about, uh, uh, management of erosion and no one getting stuck too badly in there.
Look, the site currently is gravelled. Poor soils are the, uh, sandy and gravel out there, so that should supply enough foundation for, for the vehicles in that out there. It's not something where it's already got topsoil on it, they're taking the topsoil off and just sitting on top of the, uh, the till or whatever. This is already gravelled area.
Eric, to that point.
Um, if there's no more questions, uh, a motion to accept the application as complete.
All right, I make a motion to accept application case number 220-3-RC-21SR.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Al, James Jensen, I, uh, Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, I.
Candace Crans.
Crans, I.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Uh, Jeff Brand.
Brandon.
Ron Allard.
Allard.
Which passes, application accepted as complete. Board, is there any more questions before I open it? Comment. I will open public comment at this time. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment, statement, ask a question, as well as, uh, joining us online. If I'm mute, raise your hand, or star six to unmute your phone. We'll close public comment.
So we unfortunately don't have a draft notice of decision here.
I thought I did it, but I didn't, that's because they couldn't find it. Anyways, if you did it based on the concept of.
Right.
The owner's signature, the final stamp from the wetland.
And I also, I think consistent, I would suggest, consistent with our conversation here, that, uh, we would also make it a conditions that they maintain the vegetative, uh, buffer that currently exists between Route 125, and I think I heard there's also some on Green Hill Road, um, in accordance with Barrington Site Plan Review Regulations. Because this stipulates what it means to maintain.
Do we.
I think that there was, uh, the vegetation was more so on the 125 side.
Right, right, but I, oh, I thought. Somebody said there was some vegetation on Green Hill?
Yes, there is some vegetation, uh, up, about halfway up to where the entrance is.
Hey, I, I, as you round the corner onto Green Hill from 125, I thought that corner was kind of.
There is a little bit, there's a little bit less vegetation on Green Hill than what there is on.
Yeah.
But it does go partway up.
But we're talking about preserving the existing one. We, we're, we're not asking, I don't think. Additional. Right, maintain existing, right.
Buffer was like along here.
Right.
And as it just turns.
Right, it's, it's that.
There was, there was fencing here and there's a.
Right, there was a little, there's some trees in this corner right here, right there.
I think what he's talking about is up here.
Okay, well. But it's just to maintain what's existing, we're not asking for additional, correct?
Correct. Um, do we wish to do some hours of operation?
That's. Given its location, that's in the commercial district, right? So I, I don't know, is that appropriate? There are no residences there across, on the other side of Green Hill or 125, those are businesses, right? In there, goes down to where the granite yard is.
It's all residences after that on Green Hill. Yeah, and I mean.
I'm not. So what are, would be the hours? Are, are you amenable to some restrictions on the hours there?
Being a new storage yard for us, it's hard to predict if we're going to, we have a load coming from somewhere and I'm live there at seven o'clock at night. You know, I'd want to be able to unload there. I don't want to be necessarily restricted if at all possible, you know? I can tell you we'll be respectful of the neighbors and we're not going to be out there working at midnight, you know? Tear, tear a motor, ride a crane and things like that. But if I do have a tractor trailer coming in and need to come in and drop off a trailer or pick up another trailer, we would like to be able to have that type of access.
Would you ever, do you foresee the need to be in there, perform any activity after, uh, 10 o'clock? Uh, when the, the noise ordinance kicks in, I guess?
I couldn't. At this point, I could not foresee that need. Would the need change in the future? Maybe, but right now I don't foresee that. When does the noise ordinance expire?
I thought it was seven to nine. Seven in the morning tone, nine at night, right? Nine to six, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if nobody's concerned about it, then we'll, we'll afford neighbors to make their own complaints and address it.
Right, they need to comply with the noise ordinance anyway, then the, for the north, the ordinance gets measured at the property line.
Right.
With that property line would be the boundary of 125, what the boundary.
Yeah.
Right, there is that one, there's that one, one white hour set back here.
Uh, anything else?
And also adding things. You can almost use that last notice and just kind of.
Is there a fee on that one?
Oh, any else?
All outstanding pieces.
Yep. I don't think there is any outstanding pieces, I think it probably paid.
That's a standard, right?
Board, is there no more questions?
One more quick thing, so, um, the large vehicles you have, will they be able to enter and exit, uh, at, on all occasions without backing into the property?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Dear applicant, this is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board at September 7th meeting, 2021, has conditionally approved your application referenced above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plan being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, all the precedent conditions are nonmet within six calendar months of the day, before the approval is considered to have lapsed. A mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board. Reference 823 of the Town of Barrington subdivision regulations.
Conditions precedent.
Add the owner's signature on the final plan. There is, add the wetland scientist stamp, signature of the final plan. Uh, ma, maintain existing buffers in accordance with site review regulations. Pardon me? Existing, uh, vegetative and visual buffers in accordance with separate regulation. The applicant surveyor shall certify in writing that the bounds and pins have been installed according to the plans.
Got to be no pins, something.
Cross that one off.
Next one you would have, and then the other two.
Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town.
This is just a minor use.
Final drawings. Five sets of large black line plus one set of 11 by 7 approved plans must be on file with the town. Each individual sheet and every set of drawings must be stamped and signed by the land surveyor, engineer, architect responsible for the plan. If there are significant changes to be made in the plans as specified above, one full size paper check print must be sent to the planning department. If there are significant changes to be made in the plans as specified above, one full size paper check, pretty much consent of the planning department to review prior to producing these final drawings. Anything that needs to be added?
I make a motion to approve application two, two, zero, dash, three, dash, R C, dash, twenty one, dash, S R.
Motion by Jeff Fran, second by Ron Allard, Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, aye.
Candace Cranz.
Cranz, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
James Genison, aye, Jeff Fran.
Fran, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
The motion carries. Application approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So.
Ron, how's your voice feeling now? You've done a lot of seconding over there.
Yeah. Thank you for noticing that.
I like, I like.
My voice is a little seconded.
Well, no, no, don't, don't just. Second.
Number eight. Two seventy, dash, seventy four, dash, R C, dash, twenty one, design Nelson J. Murray, senior revoked living trust, request by applicant for design review of a project that was previously approved by the planning board in 2007, struck 12 units. Applicants would like to develop six family duplex on-site water and septic on a twenty two zero acre site on Holly Lane, regional commercial zoning district. Welcome.
David, uh, my name is Wayne Moore. Going to beach engineers. This is Jack Murray, KJ Prince. Uh, this piece of property, uh, it's a 24 acre piece of property. It was approved by, uh, this. Time of that, uh, they were four build. Duplexes, uh, couple of structures, three units in. Um, this project did receive a DOT permit, uh, back at that time. Did not get constructed, it got cut, but it never got constructed. Part of that DOT permit that the yellow would be in this new roadway that would go in, so they would have to lose their curb cut, um, or tie into this new roadway. Guys can put, uh, sign a 700 cul-de-sac that went in so that you got past back up for the commercial properties. You're asking the board to forward to all of that duplex units. Or have it be multi three building type of thing. Road will not change. Um, the access to the yellow dog will remain the same. Uh, we're just keeping moving forward with septic designs, layouts of buildings on a previously approved project. Um, the site was cleared a few years ago of some, um, big specimen trees out there that we'll try to, um, work around so that we, um, can try to keep some of those trees out in the, um, 24 acre parcel. There's a large amount of wetlands towards the rear of the property. That would be the power lines. Uh, we don't plan on going any of it, near there. So, uh, I know some comments from the conservation commission about maybe protecting some of that area because it butts uh, some of the town property just on the other side of Holly Lane. So we'll be looking to work with the conservation commission to make sure that we do, um, tasteful, um, development here that protects a lot of that, that wetlands and resource areas in the, the property. That's pretty much what we have for tonight. It's just a design review. We're not looking, just looking for some comments from the board so that as we forward, uh, we have then that we can come back to the board with a full application.
Thank you very much. Um, questions from the board?
You said that the, uh, you've already had discussions with the, uh, kids around the wetlands. It's a 50 foot buffer was something that would result, uh, prior conversation. God, no, uh, there is a 50 foot buffer. There's a wetland in the middle. Um, there's actually a, um, a burnable pool at the very back of the property, uh, that has a hundred foot to that, but we will not be impacting the 50 foot buffer to that wetland. Um, we're going to try to keep the duplexes close to the cul-de-sac. It's already, uh, proposed. Big thing for us is when. Uh, we, a lot of the design was coming off of that cul-de-sac and then going into the development, adding a lot more pavement, um, a lot more sprawl of the, of this, uh, development. We're hoping to pull these duplexes closer to the cul-de-sac, use the radius of the cul-de-sac to get the access. Therefore, bringing that size of the overall development down from where it was originally approved.
So you didn't ever intend to take access off the France Road Extension? Putting in this new roadway here?
That was always the intention, to put that, uh, 700 foot cul-de-sac off of Route 4 and given the yellow dog, the access off of that roadway when it gets built.
So you may have been present for the discussion on waiver for the reduction in the size of the cul-de-sac.
As I listen.
There is, yeah. Uh, yeah, now, in this particular case, uh, because of the access here uh, and the movement of vehicles, I would be even less amenable. That was up at the end beyond, uh, where the houses were, but where this is providing really access to all of the units. Uh, personally, I'd be less amenable to reducing the radius of the cul-de-sac regulation stipulate.
I believe back when this one was approved, there was a waiver requested and denied, so I think fact that we have is actually meets your tons. So.
So to Steve's early point about board members changing, it doesn't sound like some things changed that we. We've been pretty consistent.
You've been very consistent. I, I did listen to your, your talk. I, I would love to reduce it down to 45, but I agree with your point. We're coming off of this with all of our driveways going on to that. The cul-de-sac has to be round enough so that we can.
This is a different circumstance.
That's correct.
Uh, a question that I had is, so as part of this, you're doing a lot line adjustment, correct?
No, that was all taken care of, so that, that.
Oh, it's already been done?
Yeah, so.
So. Oh, okay, maybe, that's right. You, so I've got the overall site plan and then the second one. Because on the first one on the overall, you had what looked like an area for a potential septic in Area B, which is within now the property line of Lot 71.
Right. I gave you that.
That's not an option.
Size plan there. That was the original, uh, plan that was approved.
Okay.
That was before that land behind the yellow transferred to the yellow dog. So if you look at the, the next plan, you can actually see what we're proposing. You can see that lot line is gone now.
Yeah.
So that, that's the. And cul-de-sac, yellow dog would then have to tie into this road. We do have to do test pits out there. Um, done in. State current standards. So we're done. Fifty years ago, wetlands were done fifteen years ago, so we're going to have scientists walk protect soils again, so. We don't think a lot of things moved, but we still need to have those things checked because the criteria for wetlands changed right around in 08. So, um, want to make sure that we have the.
Did you see the comments from the road agent who has some concerns? I mean, I, I looked at the topo on the overall plan. I mean, there's some pretty steep, steep slopes there. His concern is that as you develop this site, of course, you're going to have to have drainage off of these roadways, uh, that it be directed away from the France Road Extension.
Some of that's pretty tough. Uh, make it the slope, the whole, whole entire piece of land slopes towards, uh, Holly Lane. So, uh, we would have to try and stop that water, uh, either with level spreaders or try and hold that back so that.
So there's not going to be Holly Lane, France Road Extension, whatever name you here use. It's, uh, but you're not taking access off of that, so how much land disturbances are going to be? Is there going to be any land disturbance within the 40 foot setback?
Of, of.
Between Holly and, yeah, France Road and.
There may be some minor grade and that has to come up when that, that roundabout goes in. Um, then we, we put in the duplex there. You may have some um, areas that get down close there, but at this point, we haven't designed it all out yet.
Right.
Or, no, no, want to do and get the houses closer to the.
So if looking at. Contours. So you're actually coming off of what appears to be a ridge from where the cul-de-sac is down to Route 4. That's on a decline. So I guess the expectation would be then water flow along the new road would go down and probably off to the side. I don't know if it's one of those things where you end up with some kind of a rain garden down around section of Route 4 or that, or.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure.
I, I.
Whenever it was approved the last time, that's what.
Okay.
Be, we're not going to change, uh, road itself. The only time that we're going to change the road.
It, it says there's a retaining bar. It looks like some type of catch basin down in the corner there.
I think there is a small tension.
Probably a little, yeah, that's what it looks like in the drawing. Um, but for the lands, for the landscape island, uh, is that, is that drainage already approved?
That whole entire project was approved back in 08. That landscape, yeah, it expired.
It's, it's not going to be accepted as, I mean, the drainage has changed so much since 07. Would you.
We're going to drop the cul-de-sac. Right now, the way the cul-de-sac was designed, it was designed up on the top of the ridge at elevation, whatever, 340.
Right.
So, and that contour drops 30 feet going down towards, uh, France Road Extension, playing whatever it is. So our intention is to try to drop that cul-de-sac down, try to get that road a little bit lower so that we can do something different with the drainage up at the top there.
Yeah, I mean, you've got wetlands over here to the side. Um, so, I mean, just based on designs, you obviously know Chris Berry. He's come in with a, a lot of different designs for projects in which, you know, they get it down to a catch basin, detention, a detention point and then allow it to drain off into the, the wet areas.
Which should be required to demonstrate that the runoff doesn't leave your property.
Well.
Right.
Okay, that, that's, I mean.
Yeah.
Point of the day.
You know, we know how to, we, we do drainage reports all the time. We know how to do those kind of constru- you know? This is more the layout of the, the, the buildings. If the board's okay with us doing.
Well, I think, personally, I, I would prefer duplexes to triplexes, but, you know, that's. So I don't think that that's necessarily an issue. Anybody else?
The condominium, uh, so you'll have your limited common area for each unit have, it'll be set up just like. Where each unit will have a limited common area of grass next to it.
Right, required to meet the. Lot size based, right, raised on.
I did the map on it. It works out to 12 units. I did double check the map.
How is this areas though?
Actually, uh, commercial, that's where they got to be backed to 500 for the residential use.
Yes, things we typically trash, you know, if, if it's going to be, how the trash should be handled, if there's going to be, uh, dumpsters on site, mailbox locations. Um, one of the other things we were looking at that we typically recommend.
Uh, lighting.
Yeah.
Making sure the drawings, uh, where you're, you're going to have these areas that it's in accordance with the regular downlighting, that you demonstrate that the illumination meets the requirements, be able to take our requirements there. Aesthetics, we're usually, you know, we've been pushing more and more towards getting something that has, you know, a New England country look, so, you know, a, a a rectangular box with the cement block walls. That's not what we're, we're looking for here. So we're looking for a little.
Like some architectural, uh, concept presented in front of you?
Uh, yes, yes, as part, because you're going to have to come in with some, as part of the final plan with some renderings anyway, uh, for these multi-units to show where the illumination is. So typically, we're getting elevation, front end elevation, side elevation. So we'd be looking for that type of thing. Drainage in this particular case because of the nature of the lot. You know, then the requirements have changed a lot in the last 14 years, so that's going to be a big issue.
Would this be considered a conservation subdivision?
Doing it as a multi. Conservation subdivision could be similar. You could, um, that regulation. Because the density works out the same. It would be more similar to.
Uh, given your distance off the road, I guess, I, I, I don't know for sure, but I wouldn't be surprised if our chief, given this many units, would want to see a cistern up there someplace?
He talked to me about it. When this was originally approved, it was a 10,000 gallon cistern. His regulations have changed, so you might want to talk to him because he's talking. He's already his wetland carefully asked for today.
I think it's, yeah, they asked 32,000, 30,000.
You should not mention that, so you really need to have a conversation with him before you go.
Uh. Yeah, obviously, the the cul-de-sac, it would, um, I think if it meets our regulations, that should be okay. You just need to let him know, here's a cul-de-sac. Uh, you're saying it's a 500 foot distance from four back to the island? What's that? 500 feet from four back to the island?
Um, it's, it actually does, the island does not even get in there. I have that drawn on there. You can see the 500 foot line.
Okay.
Till the, the cul-de-sac.
Got it.
The outside of the 500 foot.
By the way, regulation, residential use. If the cul-de-sac was in front of that, you just couldn't have the unit.
Would you be amenable to, uh, making a biking, walking connection from the cul-de-sac to Holly Lane, France Road Extension?
I think we'll work with the conservation commission to see what kind of trails they get from there, but I think Holly Lane is used by the people in the town as a recreational road, um, then we can definitely put a trail to get to that from this development.
That'd be great because your driveway, uh, crosses, where, where you cross, where, uh, across from your driveway, crossing Route 4, there's another secondary road, so there's, there's some connectivity potential.
Uh, we have two letters. One from the conservation commission. Uh, we suggest a conservation development designation, i.e. conservation statement or other features option on the land to the west of the development. Be discussed by the people. The landing question is immediately adjacent to an up gradient of a portion of OZ River that lies within the set-to-our conservation area, Lot number 13. Also has significant wetlands that just benefit from those enhancement of the culvert on Topaz Drive and Emerald Acres just downstream of the river. The nature conservancy has submitted a grant proposal to that effect. It appears to be strong priority for conservation, appears to meet the criteria for conservation development. Would also like to see the proposed locations to the structures, septic systems, each field. We know that they must meet state criteria, but we would be concerned if they were not close to the structures, but further afield closer to the wetlands on the site. And also have one, but. Pardon me? Yeah. So we let you read your letter and. So, uh.
Is it, is the intent, will this stay a private road or is it intended that at some point in time the town?
That's a good question. I don't remember what our original intent was. You're going to dictate to the project. He asked me that. I don't, I don't remember that. I do remember that there was a concern of, uh, school bus. And that's when the cul-de-sac and the, I do remember that. That was a pretty elaborate conversation.
Yeah, well, well, and there's another question because this is coming up in the, with the dove development is that if it is private road, the school bus won't go up there, you know? They'll pick up outside of the development.
Sadly, there's no bus drivers, so.
Yeah, so there's no buses running anyway, but, you know, that, I saw that turns out to be a nationwide problem.
Yeah. Yeah, um, so let's, I think, um. Yeah, um, so let's, I think, um.
Is there any type of, uh, current or planned vegetative buffer between the, uh, that development and, and the property? I just closed the plan. What's this one? It's, uh, Lot seventy-one?
We don't, we don't have anything in the plans right now, um, but as we move forward with the project, we'll see how.
I, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Is that the property west of the right away? I, I don't.
East, east, I think, the right away, right?
Uh, yes. Easterly would be the yellow dog, this one.
Uh, oh. I, I was talking.
That, that's Yellow Barn, right, to the east?
Yellow Barn, yeah, between that and Yellow Barn, and I guess, now that you bring it up, oh, the other, you know, just on that corner between those properties and the lots out front.
We'll be working with the yellow dog to get whatever buffer, um, the, a property to the west of the road is actually on top of the retainment wall, one of the conditions of approval was a six-foot-high stockade fence that went on the retainment wall.
All right.
So we'll be having that again on that.
All right.
And, and to answer your question directly, is the, the, whatever the general agree to, are the, the principles agree to? The abrevities of the vegetation, vegetation, absolutely.
You mean the deer food?
Okay, yes, that's right. They like that.
Oh, yes, they do. That's why I wrap mine everywhere. I learned the hard way.
Yeah.
Two years to grow out the middle of those abrevities.
Yeah.
Go, go look at, uh, Washington Street. If you're driving towards Rochester from Barrington, you look, they planted a whole row there, right in the back.
What we're gonna make that a public right away, because the old plan actually says a fifteen-foot right away.
Public, okay, thank you.
So if that's. Yep, so if that's the case, then, you know, obviously, looking at what the road standards are, that, and that can impact, you know, drainage.
Yep.
From that, if it's gonna be a, a public, uh, public one.
Sure. So both to the, to the east and to the west, you've got stockade fence on top of a wall. What's?
That, or because the, that, the west is a hollow, it's pretty close, so, so, I believe it's a whole, but.
Your brother was way higher. I was on the board when it's got a.
Okay.
So anyway, the brother was way higher, so the retainment wall went up, and then the fence had to go on top of that, because he was actually gonna look down into the roadway. So that's the reason why he wanted the fence next to it, and it was the brother that asked.
Yeah, that's good.
And then there's one, there's one on the backside between, uh, Holly or France Road Extension, is that correct?
There is one up on top there, that's where they had for the units, but we're gonna be redesigning the units and things, so that, that could go away.
Is there any other houses on Holly Lane other than the one?
Rebuilding. I have, there's a couple. And it's privately maintained.
There's no applicant. Yeah, do we need to accept, do we need to accept the application of any sort? It's really just design review, right? Okay. So if the board doesn't have any other questions, I'll open it up to public comment. Um, we'll start with them first. Um, please, uh, love to come up to the computer, uh, tape address and, um, go from there.
Thanks very much, uh, John Ludwig, this is my wife Amanda Ludwig, um, we're owners of the house on sixty-six point one. Um, on, on the second, uh, and one of the maps, the area where we're referring to is just directly to the east of the wetlands, labeled as sixty-six U-Fon. But that is actually broken up, it should, it should be labeled six one.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is. The second map that has the type of, um, houses, that's the one where it's not labeled.
Okay.
So our, yeah, our lot sixty-six is directly to the right of the, of the wetlands. And so I just, we just wrote up to make sure that we say everything that we say. So we're an abutting property to, for this project. Our property is directly to the west of Lot sixty-nine, and our home is set very close to our shared boundary line. We've lived in our home close to seven years and have three children. Our main concern is maintaining the privacy that we currently have. Although your project's buildings won't be located directly behind us, we do value the tall trees and underbrush that is shared between our property lines. The proposed project's property was largely cleared in the spring of twenty sixteen, um, and that took out the majority of the woods, which provided us with the prop, privacy and a picturesque and peaceful rural set. We understand your project is a big undertaking, but we ask that you leave as many remaining trees, uh, and new undergrowth that was spared from original clearing as much as is reasonable. The natural screen's what makes our property special to us, and we appreciate you guys taking that into consideration. Um, we did have a few questions. Um, how much land will be cleared directly behind our boundary, uh, and to the wetlands located to the left of our lot? Um, how much area will be cleared behind the buil-, building units themselves? We're thinking about, you know, whether they had yards or sort of area behind the units. Um, and also, how much, uh, are you planning on pushing for the portion of the project that's labeled as the, um, it's on the high ground where it's the, uh, it's labeled as well and septic? That's directly behind our boundary, and we're curious to see how much area would have to be cleared to set that up, because that is directly behind us.
We'll, uh, do a little, let's go back and forth, uh, just because we gotta share the computer for those, um, if, if, if the applicant would be able to answer those questions, uh, give us some insight into intentions, uh, that would be great. Um, the first question being, how much land will be cleared directly behind their, their house and property?
We don't know that at this point, uh, we're just starting to lay out the units, so when we do a model of, uh, application report, we'll have all the great.
And that answers part two of that as well, you know, behind the buildings themselves. Do you foresee yourselves, do you think creating open space, or you, are you thinking more a, uh, wooded area, you know?
Right now, it's been, they're.
And, uh, I can probably answer number three. Until they have a definite location for the wells and septic.
Yeah.
Um, they won't know if that's if and where that will be cleared. Obviously, the septic, it has to be cleared as much as, or as big as the septic is.
Yeah.
Um, so it's hard to say at this point, and the well is less than the past, but I can't know where it is.
As we move forward, we'll be sharing all that information with the abotters here with.
Yeah, our big, our big concern, obviously, is that land was pretty much stripped in twenty sixteen. There's not that much left other than new, uh, new undergrowth, and we've kind of regained a little bit of that, re, by we moved there in the first place.
Yeah.
So, and we understand that you guys, you know, it's your property and things, but we just would like that in consideration as much as we can.
So you'd be looking for some type of vegetative buffer between you?
Yeah, I mean, there's not much there. There, there's, there's several large trees very spread out that were just left after that clearing and some undergrowth.
Can you bring some decks on these?
That's a good part.
I think the concern here, if you put decks on eleven, twelve, they're right.
Yeah, something to consider with the plans coming back, is vegetative buffer to protect that, uh, that property line, um, not only for, uh, the Ludwigs, but the other two that, that may be affected.
If you have time sometime, you've got a long process here. We have fifty-six. So I can appreciate that. But this would go smoothly. You gotta be happy too, so, you know, I'd be making compromises.
Especially right on there.
Yeah, and it's, and there can't be any activity, um, in the wetland there.
Of, but those, many trees directly on that.
Logging, logging's a different thing.
Yeah, so that's, this is, that's a different thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Logging, you can log your land, and wetlands aren't affected by the construction, and so.
Okay.
Most people will go in and log the land before they develop it because they can.
Right.
I'd like to make a suggestion. When you go to talk to the Conservation Commission, can you take a look at our conservation subdivision regulations? Cause you can do what they call cluster housing when you're done with the work out. So you can say, here's the area that's gonna be developed in the west. So it's open space, which is really close to kind of what you're showing here. Conservation Commission would like to add that conservation subdivision with a cluster, because that means the rest of that one has to stay in the commission's body. Still, give you your duplexes, or even if you did kind of like what Jackie thought, the twelve single families coming around or something like that, if you can make it all work out, you might be able to argue.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out where you are in relation to.
Right there.
Oh.
Right to the left of sixty-nine.
Yeah, okay, so sixty-six gets split into one, two, and three.
Exactly, yeah. It used to be one big property in, um, in twenty, December twenty.
So you're up next to the lot line there.
Right next to, it was eleven, twelve. Can they take access from the left side outside?
We have our own lane.
You have a right of way that goes up the, the northwest side of sixty-six?
Labrador Land's our, yeah, it's our property.
Very, got it, thanks.
A quick question for the abotters before we go, hang on. Uh, so, if you, um, would you have a preference on, uh, first of all, the board does have some attitude regarding visual, requiring visual buffering. Do you have a preference on there being a certain distance within which they can't remove vegetation, or do you want us to approach this as, uh, what percentage of the area is blocked visually?
I mean, I think the preference would be, would be a distance, because we want what's, what's growing continue to grow, but we understand that it's all within reason, because it's their, their project.
Thanks.
And, and just to clarify, at this point, because of the, the type of project it is, that we do have, like Steve said, the latitude to ask for visual buffering, that, that's why Steve was asking, um, and I don't know if you heard Steve, that it was, it was logged previously, so it's fairly sparse.
Right, to say that.
What it was before.
Right, to, to ask for a percentage, there's, there's not a lot of trees to.
Nothing left to say.
Take a percentage for.
So it could be plantings in that area, you know, require plantings, types of trees that'll grow up, um, you know, spruce or whatever, Steve's usually.
Well, and you were asking before about things we typically wanna see, by the way, we, we do wanna see a landscaping plan, that's required in regulations, so that, that'll all be part of that. Uh, probably one that we've had recently, if you ask the Lanyard's office, uh, Barrington Shore's campground, they came in and showed, you know, buffer planting trees. That was, uh, something that we both required, and they funded, gave us a trip. Uh, robust landscaping to show how they were buffering the campground away from, uh, property. Kind of similar sort of, I know it's not a campground, but, got a developed area flooding up.
I had just mentioned it, uh, in, in the, uh, in the write-up, but our house actually is set, I would say, within thirty feet of that boundary line, so it's not very, very.
Thirty feet of your property line?
Yeah, that back, that back line, we're right there, so it's very close.
The campground ended up being vegetated and a fence.
Yeah.
And you've expressed that you're less interested in the fence.
That we do not want fence, yeah.
Thank you for serving.
For not, not.
Serving.
Yeah.
Adding to.
Yeah, well, and the, and the last project that, uh, we were talking about with Doug Development up there, I mean, they, there's, they're, they're doing the same thing. They've specified what types of trees, you know, shrubs that are gonna be planted. Uh, trying to use, uh, species that are native, you know, to this area, but are easy to maintain and preserve.
None of the seduous, so it doesn't fall, but it don't fall.
And, and that's another thing that on the plans, we normally wanna see, uh, for as part of the package, obviously, for the, uh, drainage erosion system, um, a maintenance plan for that, both during construction and post-construction. Same thing, if there's, uh, vegetative barriers, uh, that, uh, buffers, then we have some expectation. There will be specified on the plans, if not in whatever the condo agreement is, who's gonna maintain that area and, and that they meet the regulations.
What the, what the maintenance plan is.
Right.
Uh, anything else?
So we'll just be notified of any future meetings?
Keep an eye, it, we.
They missed the full application.
Right.
Forget another notice, go, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, uh, other comments from, uh, those in the audience or people joining us online? Raise your hand, unmute. Star six if you're calling in. All right, well, we'll close all the comments.
Yeah, you can come back up.
Please, thank you, so, anybody watching can.
Yeah, we, I mean, out of this, we'd like to give you whatever information.
Yep, just hearing what people were saying, I have some questions. Um, light, uh, landscape plan, does that need to be a licensed landscaper? Um, do you require a stamp on the landscape plan?
I don't believe we do.
I don't think it's required to be licensed with a stamp.
Unlike a soil scientist or something, or surveyor. Right.
Um, you need to do it on, uh, regular plan names.
Yeah, I would say, about half the time, people hire somebody to do that, uh, we have applicants, but the other half, uh, whoever's doing the engineering, uh, they do the landscape thing.
Okay.
Uh, or people calling consultants, uh, I think that campground, didn't, uh, the new motorsports place, didn't they hire somebody also?
They did. Campground did just.
There was some, there was some.
Convention about that.
Type and size and caliber of tree and spacing.
But on the plans for the motorsports that are, uh, place that just opened up on, on one twenty-five corner there.
Yep.
And, uh, Green Hill and Toll, uh, yeah, they, they just, they drew on the plan, these trees, these certain sizes, so.
Just wanna make sure, I, I usually get a consultant, but depending on if you need a stamp, it tells me what consultant I get.
I don't think we require stamps now.
Not come up against that.
Not for this one, all right.
Um, drainage analysis, I heard a lot of talk earlier, you, fifty-year storm, but a lot of board members were talking about the hundred-year storm too. Is it a hundred-year storm that you, I'm in, or is it just a fifty-year, twenty-five and fifty?
State's the one that says you have to demonstrate compliance with the regulations for the fifty. But typically, we see the modeling for, they, they usually do, what is it, the five-year, twenty or twenty-five, fifty, and usually the modeling, they, just because the software already has it, they do the one hundred also. Uh, but, you know, the state requirements drive you to the fifty.
Yep.
However, like I said, I just, watching the news report, within a couple hours before the meeting, where they'd had four one-hundred-year events in two years, so, you know, are they really hundred-year events anymore?
Yeah, under existing conditions, it, it references floodplains, location elevations of one-hundred-year floodplain, or FEMA, uh, flood insurance study. Or as determined by drainage study.
So I don't know how you can beat that criteria and not do the hundred analysis, even though the state's asking for fifty.
Right.
Well, that's just, that's just a flood map, is a hundred-year flood map.
Yeah.
The, the drainage analysis is a different number.
Right, but I think that says the flood per the FEMA map or.
As determined by.
As determined during the drainage.
If the modeling can produce it, it's above, it's better.
Yep.
The regulations that state on 4.7.
Yep.
We, we do have a board member that, that, um, values extra parking, um, so that would be something that's brought up again.
Who would that be, what?
He likes more, more than the minimum.
More than the minimum.
If that's, if that's.
Wow, sorry.
That fits into it.
Yeah, okay. Yes, wow, and when you're well off enough to afford three vehicles for your personal use, you've got to have one. You're the one. Yeah, you, you brought it up, I mean, you were the ones that, hey, I got three vehicles.
And then lighting, I don't know, lighting, we've seen some very, uh, ineffectual lighting plans, some really good ones, um, so, but lighting plan is something that.
I encourage you to go to where it talks in the regulations about the illumination, because people have fallen short, like, they got outside lights, they don't show them in the renderings, you know? And the requirements are, yeah, you show us, you know, um, as far as what the literary parking areas and road areas, what the minimum.
All right, and so, I mean, we'll do an illumination plan with whatever light fixture that we're going to call out, so.
Are you planning any lighting along the entrance road?
I don't think so, I think that if that's going to be a town road, if that ever got turned over to town, I don't think the town would ever want to take care of lights, so.
Because what serves a dead end with that few number of houses, and I think you have a hot sell to get the town to take that road over, but you always have the right to ask.
Well, you're going to set it up though, you can now, that's right.
I'm just telling you on the select board, you're the one that has to make that determination.
And I think, uh, and, and I think that, uh, the chair already mentioned, uh, for this development, typically there would be a bank of mailboxes. Usually at the entrance, they make a turnout area, one or two car lengths.
People stop. Doesn't let you do individual mailbox.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all about that, so. We'll have a mailbox area, we'll take care of some of the things like.
Uh, any signage that's proposed, you know, as part of that, that ought to be reflected on the plans.
Anything maybe else?
It was already a permit pulled with DOT for this entrance road.
Yep. Yeah, and there's been changes that substantial.
Yeah, we just got into that with somebody, right?
And I don't know if that'll affect the yellow barn, I don't know how that will impact you.
Look at the past one and then look at what they got.
Yeah, part of that conditional, we had to give up the driveway, the old dog barn, to get that driveway, so. They didn't in the past, so.
Far bigger developments as this in New Hampshire, as I said, you've all agreed, yeah, we'll do that, and there you go. I don't know what they have currently.
Any other? Uh, we talked about erosion controls on the plan, uh, specifying seating, so on and so forth, that's. Yep.
Yep, she said sign, so.
This is very helpful, uh.
Oh, just.
Give us a lot of comments, so I really appreciate you.
One, just, one little note is that, it just came up recently when, uh, Chris Berry submitted a 105-page plan set, is in our regulations, it talks about that there will be a. All the sheets will be numbered, there will be, uh, a legend on each sheet. So if you find that to be problematic, you can ask for a waiver.
You want a legend on every single sheet?
Uh, that's, that's what the regulations currently say, so.
I'll be asking for a waiver.
Yeah, that's exactly what I pointed out to Chris, he goes, yeah, I'll be asking for a waiver, yeah. I, I mean, there may be, as pointed out in that particular plan set, like, you know, you've got different sections within the plan set, you've got utilities, you've got erosion control and drainage. So it may be appropriate as on the lead sheets, leading in a particular, uh, section of the plan set, that, you, you know, you, you repeat or have the legend on that. Does it have to be on every single sheet? Probably not, not when you get the 100 plan plus, uh, page plus plan sets. That gets to be a little laborious, especially when you get to the detail sheets, you know, that is.
My other pet peeve is, uh, the symbol on the drawing, somewhere it should be in the.
Uh, yes. Yep. Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Happy to stay here all night, but.
No.
Um, uh, is it, your, your wish is to close the design review?
Yes, please.
Right?
I make a motion to close the design review.
Uh, I'll give that one to Buddy Hackett.
Great. The assertive.
Ron Allard. Uh, James Jensen, I, uh, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Candace Krans.
Krans, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, I.
Motion carries, design review closed, thank you so much.
You, and obviously if you've got further questions, Land Use Office, they'll be happy to help you.
Thank you, great night.
Well, thanks. Yes. Yep.
Speaking of that, so I have the file that Marcia gave me, I did edit, sent it back to her, she told me a while back, she had been working on it, can you send me whatever file she was working on?
Yeah, you can see.
Okay. Like, a year and a half, two years ago, but I don't, I didn't have, I don't believe she sent me one recent, I'll check my email, but I don't.
It would be. Um, real quick, uh, so, uh, Ron Allard has a planning board parking motion, he would like to, uh, okay. All right, um, but bringing up to all, um, zoning amendment, time changes, if you have something. Yeah, yeah, that's next.
We're on, on, we're reports other committee, other business.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
Go in order because they get chastised.
Rightfully so.
We want to, um, based on current events, uh, address the home occupation, uh, language to the zoning, that was one we talked about, um, if the board has the, uh. So, we had a conversation about that, that might be something you might want to hold off on for a little bit because of some of the, um, regulations that's going on. Okay, um, the other one was, um.
Again, the 75-foot on the regional commercial to the roads, intent on that was called 125 and 4, but we have a bunch of other side roads, I actually got a guy coming in, asking for a variance. His house is on Beauty Hill Road, he's one of the first lots, and he's actually in his home, and he wants to do an addition on the back of his house, and he has to go get a variance because the back of his house is within 75 feet of the road. Now, so the intent was to protect, you know, so if the road ever got widened, the building's wide across to those major roads, not all the other side roads, so, I don't know if there's a way we could word it to where it's just 125 and 4. And the town road, we stay the 40 feet, similar to what, um, all our other. Why would we just have to go over there? And you could do that every time they want one.
How many times does that happen?
That, and there's another one, that other one that you guys looked at, with, uh, PS Road, the owner of that lot's going to be coming in to try to work with the variance to make that lot buildable, so. Working on trying to get a plan together right now, I talked to him a couple weeks ago, so.
I mean, typically, you know, when we met, when we want to make changes to address issues that keep coming up, we've had things like monuments, 15-inch culvert size, those are things we keep giving waivers for. But if it's an infrequent event, uh, like, for instance, request for waiving underground utilities, that's happened two times in six years. There's no reason in my mind to go changing regulations.
I don't, that one there, I think definitely.
Right, but I, I, I'm just saying, things like that that happen infrequently, I, I personally am not motivated to go do that when there's other things that are more pressing than we need to do.
Sure.
There we go.
Yeah, and I just.
Like a workhorse, yeah.
All right.
Which typically that.
Get your pants, rest up.
Without, um, without going into detail on each one, uh, the other one was, uh, setbacks on wetlands, um. I can't, the, the definition on the buffers to the wetlands. There's a section that says that undeveloped lots approved by the planning board. That were approved by the planning board pre-2001.
Yep.
So, any lot that was approved that was not developed pre-2001, they haven't been applying the buffer and it's been that way, and my two predecessors have been playing. We do have a person now. Once development happens, then that lot becomes a developed lot, so those buffers kick in, and the planning board did look at this in 2015, um, and decided not to change it because they felt the way it was applied inside what's written. So if someone comes in and builds a house, and you call that a developed lot, they come back in to build their garage two years later, they couldn't put their garage on, and that might have gone into what would be the buffer area, but now that buffer's going to apply because they didn't build the garage the same time they built the house. Lots were really designed, and they got approved by the planning board without that buffer on them, and that's the reason why those lots were exempted out, so. Think there should be some clean language, either one direction or the other, so that ambiguous, ambiguous wording is kind of cleaned up. All right.
So we can look at that, why don't you send the email out to everybody on the board pointing to the specific definition of regulation, so we can take a look at it?
Yeah, so it's a 9.5.
I, I thought, I thought that it would, I think I may have participated in that discussion. And I think we concluded that.
Talked about picking out previous developed, then thinking, no, if the lots were already developed, it can stay there, and then you talk about putting a comma after planning board, or the or, then it was or, it's making a statement on its own, so.
Right. That's right, I remembered that, I said, we didn't need to.
We'll save discussion for the next meeting, I just wanted to bring it up, so anybody wanted to review before we got there, the other one is my pet peeve, the gas station, um, be on that parking, um, Ron had mentioned, and then addressing possibly the culvert waiver that we constantly waiver, um, culverts.
Well, we, I, I, I mean, in updating the regulations, I have every intention of changing that culvert, there's a, there's a few things that cover it, the monuments, uh, Rick Walker wants driveways 1,000 feet or more, that you're going to have a, a hammerhead, uh, every 500 feet. A turnout, uh, and so, you know, those, I think those are going to be covered.
Will you have something before next meeting, or we'll discuss it next meeting?
We can discuss, I, I'll draft up something, I mean, those are things we can approve as a board.
Right, but we want to get.
Different, if there's zoning, we need to get that up and cranking now. Yes, we do, but I'm just saying, we're not dependent on the timelines, I mean, the zoning changes have to go into the war, so therefore there are specific dates by which we've got to get it, we've been up against the wall before in January, I think it's like, what, 21st of January or something, they have to be in.
You have the whole time, yeah.
Well, you, that's. Yeah, so.
So, next meeting.
And try to schedule that hearing for like in December, so if there's any change.
Right.
If you do have a weather issue, then you have to continue. I remember one year we come in in a snowstorm because of second.
Yeah.
That continued to push on a date where we didn't hold the hearing.
Well, we ended up, we ended up pushing, but we ended up, yeah, pushing into January and having two meetings in January to try to get it done, and we ended up with a snowstorm on one of them, so.
So we know that we got up against this, so just something to consider for the next meeting, if somebody want to bring up and start addressing those, um, and moving on, we'll move on to nine, so we can get out of here. Uh, review of a request for a building permit of 48, 40, Union Lake Road, a class six road for Jason Price, um, road agent has inspected Union Lake Road, property, blah, blah, blah. Highlight upfront is that the travelway of the road from Young Road to the further end of the residence property is considerably less than 20 feet of width, which would be required by fire codes, at best it is around 17 feet wide, a few trees would have to be cut, some removed, and one side of the road grubbed out to widen it. But there aren't really any visible instructions such as lead or water that would prohibit doing so. So he's saying to operate the road.
So, yeah, and in the draft letter, uh, that Barbara prepared, it, it does have, uh, road agents comment, as well as Chief Walker who said, hey, there are no code requirements, but I support what the road agent said.
Because it's an existing building. Existing building, we sent it out.
Yes.
All right, any comments before we make a?
Yes, Union Lake Road, this road, um, is potential con- connection to 202, uh, so it would be excellent and important for it to be at least widened to be consistent with the fire codes.
Uh, okay.
Except the fire chief says there are no code requirements to review.
Okay, well, I guess my point is.
If it was a new building going in, and that 20-foot fire lane doesn't block, and once an existing building, the fire lane has itself. The common way, I think Rick supports the 20-foot roadway stuff, it's just that it doesn't, it isn't quiet because of its fire code.
So, well, we. This is a potential opportunity to have, uh, there's, there's development occurring, this is a, a potential opportunity to ask for the road to be brought up to a more, more appropriate standard for the situation.
That's the reason why we're going through the hearing, if it wasn't an ADU, and it was just a renovation to the house inside like. Inside an existing building, maybe.
Well, it's not our decision.
Fee from the road agent, does say that 20 feet, that's going to the selectmen, so I guess you could just say you can.
Right. I, I, I for the word, strongly support road, road agent's recommendations.
Sure.
What's that?
So you want to add, um, a planning board's comment after Union Lake Road.
Support.
Correct. Widen, widen or tweak it.
He didn't actually make that recommendation, he said, it could be, and this is what it would be. So if, if we want to. Oh, yeah, if we want to change, I, that I would say that if the board elects to do so, then we would simply add a sentence at the, uh, I don't know, at the end. It says, or after, uh, Mark Murrell's comments, that, you know, the planning board supports the widening of Union Lake Road, uh, to 20 feet.
Required by fire code.
Well, well, no, it's not required, you can't say that.
He said it's not, the fire chief says it's not.
Fire chief says no. Right, right, so it's not required.
So just.
So we can't say as required. We can just say, we.
Well, if a code requires 20 feet, we can say that, but we can't say it happens to require in the situation.
Yeah, it's not, so we can, right, so we can simply say, you know, the planning board supports the widening of Union Lake Road to 20 feet. Now, I think the select board's going to go, yeah, okay, fine, right.
I've seen denial.
Well.
We want to put that right after the sentence where you talked about the planning board.
I think it should go after our planning board's comment.
I think I'd be part of your planning comment, but the N word says Union Lake period, then.
Yep. However.
However, the board strongly recommends the widening of the road.
20 feet, right. With knowing full well that.
Just want to make sure we put it the way you want.
That isn't going to happen.
Sounds good. All right, a motion to send that letter as amended.
I make a motion to send the, uh, letter, uh, about my, uh, building permit for map 113 lot 40 as amended.
Motion for Jeff Brand, taken by Ron Allard, uh, Steve. Motion for Jeff Bran, second by Ron Allard, Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Anders Krans.
Krans, I.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, I.
James Jensen, I, Jeff Bran.
Bran, I.
Ron Allard. Time and place.
Time and place. Yes.
Next meeting is.
September 21.
September 21st.
6:30.
Motion to adjourn until September 28. Agenda, we're going to put, you're going to do a workshop. For regulations.
Regulation changes.
Motion to adjourn until September 21.
Make a motion to adjourn to September 22.
Second by Ron Allard. All the famous say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you, have a great night, everyone.